Good evening. Glad y'all are here tonight. I would like to call our Board of Commissioners regular meeting July 17, 2025, 7:01 PM to order. Ms. Jones, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. If you'd please join me for a prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, I'd just like to thank you for everyone in our community, and I just pray that those who are sick, you'd have your hand on them and heal them. Those who are traveling, please keep them safe. I pray for all of our children as they're playing and enjoying the summer, that they are all safe. Thank you, Lord, for taking care of everyone at our beautiful, wonderful 3rd of July celebration, where we had so many from our community and surrounding communities, and even out of the state, come and visit Fairview, and with as many people as we had to not have an incident, that's all you. Thank you so much. I pray for this board and our staff. I thank you for our police officers, our fire, Public Works, and everyone on our staff who do such a good job, please keep them safe. I pray that this board make great decisions for the city and be guided by you. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is Mayor's Comments. I want to welcome everyone here tonight who are in person and at home. We love it when everyone gets involved, and we have thanked our officers back here who keep us safe. And just remember, let's be polite and courteous if we speak or interact with the board. Thank you so much. And let's make sure our mics are on and close our mouths so everybody at home can hear Item number five. Before we approve the agenda, I've been asked by staff if we could consider moving item I, Resolution 3825, for the T-dot to be moved from 11I to 11A. So I guess that would be, what, A-point-one and then A-point-two? Would that be proper? Okay. All right. So, item number I, 3825, will be A-point-one, and then Resolution 31.25 will be A-point-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, item number five passes 5-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
There are three tonight, Mayor. The first is Ms. Colleen Van Fossen.
Hi there. If you could just state your name, your address, and if you live in the city or county.
Hello, is this on? Hi. My name's Colleen Van Fossen. I live at 7801 Pinecrest Court in the city of Fairview. And I received my certified letter telling me that the property adjacent to me was to be, was requesting to be annexed, and this is all woodland. It's a woodland lot, trees, turkeys, deer, all of that, and it's a big part of the reason why I chose to live there, because of the serenity and the peace of being in a wooded I don't have curtains in the back because I don't need them, and I like to see the woods all the time. I wonder if after this property development occurs, if I'm going to be one of those people who's coming before you in a couple of years saying, "I'm having flooding," and I've never had that before. What exactly will happen? And all the waste, all the, when it rains, you don't see woods flooding because the trees and the vegetation absorb the water versus areas that have no vegetation at all, where it simply runs off and into the ditch and into the creeks and muds up the creeks. So it's a big concern to me that this is happening. I don't know that I have the power, I didn't have the money to buy the property myself, or I would have. I think it went on the market for $799,000, which was a little out of my reach. So, but I hope that as this process goes through, that there is sensitivity to how we develop woodland into subdivision, and what it looks like now, and buffer zones for the people who have lived there for some time. So I hope that it will be a sensitive and well-thought-out process, and that's what I'm asking for. So if I, if I could wave a magic wand and stop it, I would, but I can't stop that kind of activity, so I just ask for sensitivity to the people who already live here, and that we create the community that we want, not the community that's being foisted upon us by someone who wants to build something now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Helen Engel.
Was that it?
Helen.
Helen, okay. Sorry. I didn't hear it either. Pull the mic just right in front of your mouth.
My name is-
Perfect.
Oops. My name is Helene Herclots Engel, that's my husband, and I live at 7189 Dice Lamprey Road, and my concern is the new subdivision is right next to us, and there's some really tall, unkempt trees, and every time there's a big wind, it, you know, I'm just waiting to have it. And I was wondering if the subdivision, whoever building, are they going to maintain the tree line, or is it our responsibility, even though it's not on our property?
Ms. Engel, we can't dialogue during this time, but we will write down your comments and your information, and get with the right people, and get this answered for you, okay?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Last, we have Thomas Engel.
Number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition. A, city events.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I'm gonna talk a little bit about July 3 and the City Management Report, but just wanted to remind everyone, our next event is the Back-to-School Bash. It'll be here at City Hall on Saturday, July 26, starting at 9:00 AM. If you saw the stuff in the foyer as you came through, we will be distributing that, and it's, we'll do that until it's gone. So just, it's a, it's a great way to help children get the year started off correctly. If you have any questions about it, you can reach out to Richard Ross, but that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? All right. Item 7B will be from our public library.
Thank you for including us on the agenda this evening. My name is Amanda Jones, and I'm the Assistant Director of the Williamson County Public Library System. We are lucky here in Fairview because we do have our very own branch of the library system at our, at our disposal here, right on Highway 100 down the street. I hope everyone here has a library card. If you don't, please come by and get one. Back in the spring, our longtime branch manager retired, and I'm sure some of you had worked with him on various things. I know specifically Mayor Anderson has given her time to come by and be a guest reader for us on several occasions, which we appreciate. But in June, our new branch manager started, and so I'm here this evening to introduce her to you guys. Her name is Beth Hindman, and she's going to share a little bit about herself and her background, and just update everyone on the great things that our library is doing in our community. So, thank you again for having us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm just gonna give you the short and sweet about me and my public library experience. So I grew up in Mississippi, in Mississippi Delta, in a little town called Greenville, very much like Fairview. I dreamed of becoming a teacher. I got my Bachelor's in Education in 2007 from Delta State University, but I ended up working full-time in the public library in Oxford, Mississippi, and I absolutely loved it. I quickly grew to love the library, the service it provides, the commitment to community learning and collaboration, and I received my Master of Library and Information Science in 2010 from the University of Southern Mississippi, and I have worked in many roles in the library, including children's librarian, teen librarian, and branch manager. I have worked in library systems in Mississippi, Tennessee, and Indiana, which is where I'm coming from. We just moved here from Evansville, Indiana. Working in several systems has allowed me to interact with diverse communities, network with library colleagues, and learn how different libraries carry out their missions. Earlier this year, my husband and two children decided we wanted to move from Indiana back to the Nashville area to be closer to our families, and I feel incredibly fortunate to be the branch manager at Fairview Public Library. The staff and community have been incredibly welcoming, and it's easy to see that the library is a cornerstone of the Fairview community. I hope to be able to use my breadth of public library experience to create exciting, enriching programs for all ages, and to freshen up our collections with new books and materials, and I'm also looking forward to getting out in the community and collaborating with local organizations and schools. And before I leave, I just want to plug a couple of our programs that we have, they're very popular. We have Storytime and Toddler Time every week. Toddler Time is every Tuesday at 10 o'clock. We do stories, songs, and have playtime afterwards. Storytime is every Thursday at 11 o'clock AM. We have stories, songs, and a craft. And coming up, we're getting ready to kind of end our summer reading program, and on this coming Monday, July 21, 11 o'clock, we will have Terry Hedges, who's a magician, and I'm sure we'll have a huge crowd come out for that. And upcoming this fall, I'm working with my staff, and we're gonna be planning some great programs, some new book clubs, a family puzzle race, and a tiny art show for teens. And all of that information can be found on the Williamson County Public Library website, and I thank you all for allowing me to be here, and I'm looking forward to it.
Ms. Hindman, can I ask you a couple of questions? Okay. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
We're so excited that you're here with us in Fairview, and I know that the library has a Friends of the Library group, and could you explain how the community can get involved with your fundraising?
Sure. So to be a member of the Friends of the Public Library, it's $10 a year. We, they meet the third Saturday of every month, 9:30 at the library, and most of what that group does is they do work on our book sale. They help us with different programs and different fundraising opportunities they do on their own, and it's really just a great way to be a part of the community and the public library.
And your business sponsorship, I challenge all the businesses in the community. If I correct, I believe that we pay $50. Is that, yes, $50? And that is such a small amount for our businesses in the community to join together and, you know, give that small amount, but you can give more, but, you know, at least the $50 if all of our businesses would support the library, look at what we could do as, you know, as a joint effort. So, thank you.
You.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would there be a possibility for our library to give us, like, just come up quarterly and give us a rundown of what's going on there publicly?
I'm hearing yes. That would be great.
Thank you.
We'd love that. That would help us to get the community more involved in sponsorships and also different activities that you have for the children to get involved in. Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A would be our Police Department report. That would be Chief Humphries.
On the most recent quarter, April, May, and June this year, first slide. Our overtime for the months you'll see are significantly down. April, three and a half hours, none there in May, and 15 in June, as opposed to last year's, were up pretty heavily, and that is accomplished with four of our staff that were in training in the academy. So we're short-staffed, and that is a testament to our captains and our sergeants managing our staff very well, so that we don't incur a lot of overtime. Next slide. Training hour comparison, we've really stepped up our training, which is something we consistently do, but you'll see that the months of April, May, and June kind of dwarfed that of last year. We're doing everything we can to train as much as possible and put the best officer on the road there. Next slide. Rest comparison, 65 for the month of April, dipped a little bit in May, back up in June, pretty consistent across that. Next slide. Citation comparison. Again, we've had this conversation before about citations. We, we are out there, we, they vary from time to time. The 135 of the past month of June was largely an initiative that we set aside for ourselves to work on hands-free and big trucks. A lot of big trucks are rolling through our areas, dump trucks, construction trucks, and I myself have seen them come through the red light here below us at excessive speeds, so we set out to try to address that through the summer months especially, when a lot of the kids here that are driving age are out on the streets during the day and they're not in school. So we stepped that up heavily in the previous months, trying to accomplish some of that. Next slide. That also relates to auto accident comparison. You'll see that for those months in comparison last year, they've dropped significantly. That always equates. I know people do not like getting stopped and getting tickets, and again, in my presentation at the end of the year wrap-up, we write about 25% of the contacts we make with people are citations. The rest of the time, it's a, an attempt to educate and redirect the behavior and move on, but it does translate to lower accidents. And you see that as it, across the board for April, May, and June, and no fatalities again that we report for this quarter, which is great. Next slide. Calls for service and self-initiated activity. I see that's up across the board through those three months. I did have a note there to the side that through the beginning of the year to now, you come seeing the first quarter and this quarter, been a 19.4% increase in call volume. I think the chief here will probably touch on that too, because we just had this conversation earlier in the week, that his call volume's up about 20% also. So that is happening, it's across the board. The city's growing, and we're busier, and you're seeing that reflect in those, in those numbers. Next slide. Our LISO sales for the second quarter, again, pretty good, a little hit there, $26,062 for second quarter, and we anticipate to stay active in that and keep generating kind of that free money for the city. Next slide. Our public relations, the July 3 Shop of the Cop concession tent and sale. Now that is a, that was an early number that I put in when I did my PowerPoint. That has grown to almost $9,200. We had some silent auction items that had to come in and people pay for and retrieve, so that was good. Our goal every year for the Shop of the Cop, for all the events we do, is to ring in around $15,000 for the year, is what our expenditure is on the kids at Christmas. So $9,100 is a, is chipping away at that pretty good, and it was a great event, a lot of people, and they did come and do business with us, and all of those proceeds, we say it all the time, every bit of those proceeds go to the kids. The police department doesn't retain any of that, we spend all of that. A lot of you've seen from our Facebook posts, Officer Jenna Blackford, who's in the back of the room here, and Tyler Wills, both graduated from the police academy on 6/20. They finished up their final phase of their FTO the week after that, and have been released on the street to serve the public. So if you see them out, congratulate them, welcome them, they're out here working the streets now. Drug and seizure asset for sales for the second quarter is $1,358, and our general fund surplus sales was $30,000. When you see a general fund surplus, when, a lot of times when, when our Tom presents you a surplus sheet, some of that is LISO, and it's signified on the sheet, which, or it's LISO, or it's city surplus. That would be anything from old patrol cars or anything that we're cycling back out, and then you vote on to move that into surplus. Those are the sales from that. Next slide. Yeah, so, any questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Item 8B is Fire Department Report. Chief Hughes?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the quarterly report for the second quarter of 2025 from the Fire Department. For the second quarter, we ran 819 emergency calls. As you can see, we're kind of seeing the same thing the Police Department is, our call volume for the first half of the year is up about 20%. We had, that's kind of the breakdown of significant events. We had 64 overlapping incidents this quarter. Again, that's when we get a call before a previous call can be cleared. We had two vehicle fires, dumpster fires, two building fires in the county, and then a camper fire in the county. We responded outside of the city limits on 23 calls this quarter. Our average response time is down a little bit, which is good for us. It's kind of one of our metrics that we keep up with is our response time. It's 7 minutes and 50 seconds. Our average on-scene time is down also. It kind of goes with kind of the first quarter, we have more fires, we're on-scene longer on fires than we are medical calls or MVCs. Again, to report an emergency, your first call should be 911. We are still getting calls at the station reporting house fires, car fires, all kinds of things, so call 911, it's much faster to get us there. Second quarter call breakdown looks most, mostly the same as it always does, where we lead in medical calls and rescue calls is the top end. These are just some pictures that our training officer has compiled over, over the quarter. Second quarter heat map, again, as you can see, this is growing, it takes into account the 20% increase, as you see those green, yellow dots, and even the red ones. The red ones kind of stay in the same place, center of town, out toward the interstate, and kind of in the closer loop there at 96. Fire prevention activities, Fire Marshal did 57 life and safety inspections and follow-ups. Again, we've only had minor corrective action notices issued. Attended the State Fire Marshal's Prevention Class. We did 34 plan reviews, two smoke alarm installations. Again, if anyone in the city needs a smoke alarm in their home, please call the station, choose the option to speak to the Fire Marshal. If he's not there, go to his voicemail, and he will call you back and set up a time to install smoke detectors. We are still part of the, the grant with the state, and they are free to us to install. Second quarter training, we had 1,746 hours. Members attended courses at TFACA. We had one graduate from the Recruit Academy. We have pumper driver operator, Officer One, Fire Officer Four, and two members attended the AMT class at Brentwood, and one of them has passed his test and is a certified AMT in the state of Tennessee, passed that Monday. The second member will test tomorrow morning for his license. Any questions?
Thank you.
I have a question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I know it's kind of hot weather and everything, but does the Commissioner camp still going forward?
I can get Jake to see if he can schedule that. It is hot, but again, we're not gonna put you in a fire or anything.
We can wait till the fall. Just checking on-
I'll talk to Jake.
Thank you, sir.
Item 8C is Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Public Works Director Bratcher gave me this report to, they, they stay busy all the time, but I'm just gonna read through this. You should have a copy, but they did a lot of work during all the, all the rain events, and washout places throughout the city. They've, they've replaced culvert at Lake Road, they've hot-mix patched several areas in the city. They installed new stop-ahead signs on Cumberland Drive, which I believe, I've never seen a sign quite so dramatic, so I think that's gonna help that intersection quite a bit. Cleaned out stormwater drains and ditches throughout the city, cut back low-hanging limbs on Cleveland Drive, Kyle's Creek Drive, Pingrove Lane, Horn Tavern Road, repaired or replaced 38 city signs in the city, removed dead trees in the city's right-of-way on Crook Cut Road and Deer Valley Drive, helped set up light towers for moving in the park, removed old compressed air supply line in the city shop and installed a new one that is TOSHA-approved. Completed first mowing of the city's right-of-way, completed the chipping service, chipper service for the months of April, May, and June, helped set up for the July 3 event, maintained flyer beds at the Health Department, and they completed 57 additional work orders that pertain to the city's right-of-way and properties, and this completes my report. Thank you. Their report.
Can I tell you, these guys work morning, noon, and night, and if anyone deserves applause, they do, because they are out there after storms clearing streets, our park, snow, you know, out in this heat, doing all kinds of different things to keep our city looking beautiful, so if anybody has- If anybody on the board has a question?
Mayor?
Yes.
Since we approved the budget, when do we put out for someone to be hired for that position? Do you have a timeline?
Yes, we've been looking, right now, we've, we've got a couple of- Yes, we've been looking right now, we've, we've got a couple of prospects. If those fall through, we will advertise for that position. But right now, we've got a couple of, Public Works Director Bratcher is, is on that. He's got a couple of folks that he's talking to.
Thank you.
Item 8D is Finance Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. In your, you should have in your hand, three reports. One is a Board of Commissioners Budget Report. The second is the Summary Financial Statement, which gives, which gives a detail of the revenues and also gives a summary of the departmental expenditures. And the last page is, is account balances as of June 30, 2025. And as always, I'm always available if there's any questions on expenditures or revenues or any, anything related to finance. Thank you.
Any questions of our City Manager from the Board? Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question about the, I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question, about the bonds. It was just, it was just a quick question. On the totals, on the right-hand side column in the spreadsheet, you have $6,96,160 and then estimated remainder, but then underneath you have another number of $4,222,000. Is that what we have to spend prior to January of '26? Or is it the top number, 4239?
The 4239250 is what the plan is to spend in the future. The 4222957 is the account balance as of June 30th, 2025. The overage will be made up in interest earned in that account.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Commissioner Buffalini? Just for clarification, it's December 15th, 2026, not January of '26.
Item number nine, Consent Agenda A, Minutes From June 17th, 2025, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting.
Mayor, you skipped City Manager Report.
I guess I just heard from Tom and assumed we did it. Okay. 8E is our City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. We've got a town hall meeting scheduled for July 31st at 7:00 PM here. We have a strategic planning session scheduled for Saturday, August 16th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I just wanted to say a little bit about July 3rd. The event was a huge success. Big thank you to Richard Ross for another outstanding job coordinating this event. Thanks to all city employees who helped, and a special shout out for Public Works, Police, and Fire Departments for their efforts before, during, and after the event. Thanks to all the sponsors and vendors who kept the event in the black with donations of $40,290. All the vendors I spoke with said they sold out of inventory. The police tenant received almost, and I'm, I don't mean to contradict what Police Chief Humphries said, but I saw the deposit today, and it was, it was, it was about $9,700. So, you know, it was almost $10,000 in donations that will be used for Shop with a Cop. No major incidents reported, and exiting traffic control exceeded expectations. So all around, I mean, there's always things you can improve on, but I feel like it was an excellent event from top to bottom. We are planning to utilize the new agenda software for the August 7th meeting, so be looking for information from Ms. Rachel Jones. We're excited about this, or I don't think anybody's more excited than she is, though. But that's my report. Thank you.
Any questions from the Board of our City Manager?
Mayor?
Yes.
I seem to be asking all the questions. What's the status on the police facility, training facility in Hickman County right now?
Currently, we are in the process of getting a document that allows us to build the, the facility in Hickman County. We've had a verbal yes, but we're, we're working on getting a document that, that is more than a verbal yes. We're, we're, hopefully that'll happen soon.
And have we closed on that property as well?
It's, no, as soon as we get a, get a written documentation, we will move directly in that. We have done some preliminary tests to the property and to make sure everything is, meets the requirements to build on the site, and they all have.
I would just like to say, our 3rd of July event, since Richard Ross has taken it over, has just, I mean, the, the number of people who come to our community is, you know, tens of thousands, and it's such a great event, and for it to, you know, be put on without any tax dollars being paid is amazing. Also, we have sponsors who reach out to us, ready to give money for next year and the year, you know, the year after. We have sponsors now from Nashville. They see how, you know, we have a population of 10, 11,000, and, you know, we're a tenth the size of Franklin, and our event is three times bigger. So it just shows how people love to come and spend time in our community and what a great event this is, and just, you know, we appreciate the sponsors, the staff, our police and fire, who, having that many people together and no major incident, I mean, that, that is huge. I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen that happen anywhere. So I just think we need to give also a round of applause for all the people who have been involved in our 3rd of July, especially Richard Ross. Item number nine is Consent Agenda A, Minutes From June 17th, 2025, Board of Commissioner Regular Meeting. Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number nine, 9A passes four with one abstention. Item number 10, 10A, Old Business Annexation, Old Cox Pike. I will now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak for the public hearing for this, please come forward, state your name, address, and if you're in the city or county. Seeing none, I will close the public.
I didn't realize I had two opportunities to speak, but I will tell you that my name is Colleen Van Fossen, and I live at 7801 Pine Crest Court, and I am opposed to this annexation because it is a disruption to the woodlands, and we have plenty of other houses to pick from. So there's Colleen's reasons for not annexing this.
I'm Jan Colley. My address is 7833 Pine Crest Court in Fairview. I'm also opposed to the annexation of the property behind my house. As this lady so kindly said, it's a disruption to the whole neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's a small block, and that's all we are on Pine Crest Court, and because it's so quiet, we're, we're kind of spoiled, because we like where we live, and we see all of the building around us. I'm concerned that this city is going to turn into another Franklin. We're going too fast with all of the subdivisions that are getting built right now, and so I just want to let you know that I'm sure that I'm not the only one in my block who thinks that the annexation will lead to a subdivision, and it's going to stress out our, our Fire Department and our Police Department and any other city services that we have.
Hi. My name's Annette Beek. I live at 7164 Dice Lamplie Road. I'm originally from the Bay Area, California, and I am a transplant, moved here in 2008. All three of my children graduated from Fairview High School. I am in favor of the annexation. I believe this is a great city to raise my kids. We moved here for a better life for our children, and we got that. And I think that the more people that come here and experience that, I think that it's a great place to raise family. I'm in favor of seeing families come here to experience that. I'm 56 years old today.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. And I'm ready for a new chapter in my life, and so I, I'm in favor of seeing new families come in. Also, my home, I'm on five acres of land, and I'm on a septic tank, I'm, I have propane. I would love to be able to tap into the utilities that would be offered, like the sewer and, you know, the gas lines and things of that nature. That could only also help to increase the value of my home, so that if I decide to sell at some point, that, that would be an additional selling factor of the value of my home. So I am in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Item 10A2, Resolution 34-25, Resolution to Annex Certain Territory Upon Written Consent of the Owner and to Incorporate the Same Within the Boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee with RS40 Single Family Residential Zoning, MAP 043, Parcel 015.00, 052.00, 053.00, Old Cox Pike, 53.162, plus or minus acres. Owner, Marlin Cunningham. City Planner, Mr. Greer?
Board, this item comes to y'all tonight with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. The vote was seven yes, one no, and one not, not voting member. This property does lie within the urban growth boundary of the city of Fairview. Just a reminder, the urban growth boundary is a reasonable area surrounding the city that the city expects to provide services to at a reasonable amount of time within the next five-ish years. This property is contiguous with the city of Fairview. It does touch several properties in the Pine Crest subdivision and Old Cox Pike and Dice Lamplie. There's an opportunity that y'all will see in the coming months. The developer who is looking to purchase this has expressed that they would prefer to rezone this property to R20. You will see a request at the Planning Commission in August for this property to be zoned R20. That R20 zoning came in with the annexation request. Tonight, you're listening, you're hearing the annexation request. This property, if annexed, would come in as RS40, which would be one home per acre for their lots. There is a representative tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Will the representative please come forward?
Paul Olson with Anderson Del Gups.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. My questions start with Mr. Greer, please. If, if you know, or you may know too.
I'm sorry, let's entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
It's okay, it was my fault. Let's entertain a motion, and then we'll do questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, apologize for that. So what's the topography of this 53, 53 acres? Yeah.
Roughly 53 acres. There's some moderate slopes over towards the western boundary, starting kind of where it buckles in from that little parcel in the northwest, down along that western side. Most everything drains to the southwest and to the south, it looks like. But yeah, other than some moderate to steep slope on that side, but otherwise fairly just moderate.
Are there any streams or ponds or other bodies of water on this property?
There's, the USGS shows a potential drain along that western side where those steeper slopes are, and the aerial shows what looks like a farm pond down south of the Pine Crest in that little neck area to Dice Lamplie. We'll have to do some investigations to see the extent of that, whether it's farm pond or jurisdictional.
And somebody alluded earlier to the fact that there could potentially be some sewer improvements made to this area of Fairview with this potential development that if everything got approved, it would be R20. Could you please explain how that's possible?
It's, the developer met with Michael Rogers with Water Authority of Dixon before this whole request and got an availability letter for water and sewer from them, and part of that agreement and the availability was for some upgrades in that area and connecting to the existing line that would not only serve the property, but I think help alleviate some existing conditions in the area. So it would not only serve, but also improve the stuff that's already there. So it wouldn't be just to serve the development, but it would also improve the neighboring.
Mr., thank you. Mr. Greer, as the current TPUDC rewrites of our zoning ordinances go, what is this particular property slated to be if we were to pass as it is in existence today?
This property is not within our corporate boundaries, so it's not located on our proposed map, but the 2040 plan shows us as medium residential, which has R20 listed as a appropriate zone district for this property, so two homes per acre.
And I'm almost finished with my questions, and thank you for that. On the other side of this property, from where the Pine Crest development is located, is a farm. And it's a working cattle farm, and it's downhill from where this development would be. How can we be sure that that farm and the water sources for those cows that are on that property would not be affected by any future development? And this is down Old Cox Pike from it, that field right there on Old Cox Pike.
That it's which side?
So I'm going to say it is on the east side, like, so where Old Cox Pike is, and there's the big green forested area, that big empty field that's next, like, there's that tree line, that's full of, I think, black Angus, but there's a whole herd of them out there, and their water source is right next to where that little old house sits on that property.
Well, I mean, when... Well, I mean, when, if everything passes and development plans are done, we're going to follow all subdivision regulations and ordinances and make sure we meet water quality and water detention requirements.
Thank you.
Mayor, please.
Yes?
Couldn't quite hear you too good on the sewer of helping out the neighborhood. Can you explain that a little more thorough?
It was my understanding that there's been some existing issues in the Pinecrest, their sewer with grinder pumps and such. And part of the agreements for the availability was to provide upgrades and a pump, which would not only serve the proposed future development, but also alleviate those existing issues in the Pinecrest.
So some of the issues that Pinecrest has been having, this developer would take care of?
Yeah, it would. It would not only serve development, but it would improve the sewer for that area that's existing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes?
There was a comment made earlier during the public hearing I just wanted to address. And this goes for all annexations that take place in the city of Fairview. Police, fire, and all other services that the city provides put their input in prior to us having this vote. So the police have a report stating that with the current patrolling efforts that they have, with the resources they have available, same with fire, they can maintain that same level of service if that property is to be annexed. So I just want to make that clear, that that is taken into consideration prior to an annexation vote.
I do want to say that we also are reciprocal with county. So even if it's county property or city property, we're reciprocal. So we will, you know, if county's busy, we will go to any type of fire situation, police situation on that property anyway. Just want to state that. I attend all the water board meetings and Michael Rogers did speak about this project. There will be many improvements which will help the surrounding neighbors as far as water and sewer is concerned. So I did want to state that since I'm in the water board meetings and do get information from them.
I have another thought that's kind of a question. Unless, okay, thank you. So we do have our zoning ordinances being rewritten and the code around that. If this were to be annexed and then the sister request to it for it to be rezoned were approved, it would be potentially true that the development plan coming in would come in under our current ordinances and not future? I don't know where we are on that.
Potentially, but highly unlikely. Would most likely come in under the new zoning ordinance and meet all of the new requirements.
Potentially, but not 100%.
Not 100%. It'll depend on how long Planning Commission and U5 take to adopt a document. But most likely it will be under the new zoning ordinance.
Yeah, so before we take a vote on it, I just want to say, I mean, I'd really rather wait until we have that in place. I don't want us to feel rushed in our process. This is the leading edge of town. Right next to it is a big farm. It's undeveloped. My two cents in response to this is I would just really like to hold on this. We have so many developments coming in. We're dealing with a lot of different stormwater issues in town right now. And I think hurrying up to do this before we can take our time and get it right with the zoning ordinances is something that we don't have to do. We can give ourselves time. So that's where I'm just kind of sitting and wanted to share my thoughts with the board.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes?
I just want to respond to that. And I don't necessarily disagree with you, however, I will say that this, there will be a, this board or the Planning Commission or both could potentially delay the rezoning process on this property. To annex it in at R40 would require them to build one acre lots. I've always said it and I've always been a proponent of taking advantage of annexations when you have the opportunity to. It is a, there's very few ways the city of Fairview or any municipality for that matter can make money and property taxes are one of those. So in my opinion, I would respectfully say that an annexation, adoption of this property is appropriate. However, to delay the zoning due to the timing of the new zoning regulations potentially could be something to be considered.
Any other comments from the board?
I just want to respond to Vice Mayor McDonald. And I appreciate what you said and I don't necessarily disagree, but that's a lot of ifs. And I think it's only a matter of time before this is annexed and whether it's tonight or another time. And I just, again, just want to say I'd like to take a pause on that. Because even if we annex it in and then we just hold it up anyway in the rezoning, I still feel like there will be a sense of urgency on it because we've got a request. And that's assuming that the Planning Commission doesn't go forward with it. I just, I still think that's one of the things that we thought about a couple of months ago during the elections about taking a pause. And I'm still very sincere about that and just waiting for us to get through without rushing on our new zoning ordinances.
Mr. Greer, if you could just speak to the processes, if this was to be denied for its annexation, what would take place?
If it were to be denied for annexation, this property would not be available for annexation for one year. If it...
One year before the request could be made, then it would have to go back through the entire process, which is another three months.
Unless it was brought back for reconsideration by the board. I will note, our staff, fire, police, planning, and engineering did have a positive recommendation for this, with it being in our urban growth boundary, being contiguous with the city, and having the water availability letter from Water Authority of Dixon County. I'll speak just a little bit on that. So currently, the pump station at Pinecrest pumps all the way out Cox Pike, kind of the end of the line, and it's pushing all of the sewer down the line from there. It is almost 25 years old at this point. It has failed multiple times in the last few years. And Water Authority saw this project as an opportunity to place an oversized pump station on this property if this development were to move forward, to place an oversized pump station where Pinecrest would not become the end of the line and they would pump into the new development. And then the new development's oversized new pump station would pump out Cox Pike, which would improve not only Pinecrest, but every development that's a long Cox Pike that has conventional sewer, it would improve their force main down through there. So it's not just the exact, you know, it's not only helping this one particular development, it's improving a Water Authority asset that helps many citizens within the city of Fairview.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So this is what's so complicated because we have so many competing interests. So while we're looking at improvements of sewage in one place, I'm looking at an impact on the road. We don't have the intersection started at Northwest Highway and Highway 96. This development, for everybody going to Nashville in the morning, is going to be going up Old Cox, down Dice Lampley, straight at the intersection on Northwest Highway to 96. That intersection's not even close to ready. We have not only this development that potentially could come up, we've got what's happening over with Aiden Woods. And we've just approved a new annexation and rezone on that one. We have, or just a rezone, but we have the developments that are going up right there on Northwest Highway. We've got Belvoir, Orange Shire, Orange Shire Phase Two. Bellhaven looks like it might be getting started. So which one do we pick? And I'm going to go with the traffic issue until we can get that intersection done and say, this is, I believe, a matter of time. But again, we have a 2040 plan, it's 2025. And I like the idea of the sewage, I get it. I would benefit from that improvement, but I also would suffer from the additional traffic until that intersection can be done and we can do something about the roadways here. So you got to, I guess, weigh them. And I think we just need to hold off and fix what we don't have right today before we approve another big development in that area.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Nay.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A2 passes 3-2. I might have said 11, I think it's 10. Sorry, 10A2 passes 3-2. Item 11, new business. This is where we flip-flop, so we're going to start with A1, which would be 11A1. Resolution 38-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute a local agency project agreement between Tennessee Department of Transportation, known as TDOT, and the City of Fairview, Tennessee regarding the I-40 interchange lighting at exit 182, Economic Development Officer Patty Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I appreciate, I'm going to briefly, I appreciate y'all moving this board. I'm going to briefly just give you a summary of how we got here. And then we have the experts here to answer the questions from TDOT. So we have, I just kind of want to take a step back. Tom gave me a task. You know, as you're going to some of these meetings with TDOT, GNRC, look for road projects, look for ways that we could benefit our citizens. And so as I started meeting, we knew we had this bond money, we knew there was going to be some restrictions whether or not we could get everything done in time. And so let's see what a backup would look like. What would be something that would improve the life of our citizens if we can't meet what was originally listed? So started researching through meetings, found out there was a program through TDOT that we could partner with. It was a 50/50 grant and it's an interchange lighting. So y'all have it all in your packet. I've lived in the community for a long time. Most of the people that live in the community know that when you get off, we don't welcome people by the exit. It's a very dark, curvy exit and it's not always been the most appealing part of our town. We all know we have a wonderful community that's delightful and we have a lot, but it's hard to get people past the exit. So one of the things that came up is this interstate exchange lighting program. And so we started looking into it through conversations. We have come to this to present to you tonight. But I feel like, yes, will it help economic development for that area? Could that change the face of the area? I 100% believe so. And I could sit here and only talk about how it would benefit, you know, future businesses and be an attraction for businesses to move to that interchange. But I don't want to focus on that because I really, just safety is the biggest concern and we all know that that's a hotspot. So I did print off really quick because I had a commissioner ask me about numbers. So I went to both chiefs and they determined it's really hard for them to say, hey, we have so many calls out at this intersection. They can't do it because there's not a physical address for an exit. So their software system kind of limits them in that process. So I printed off two things and left it on your desk tonight. And one is from the 2040 plan and it was actually in the 2040 plan of hotspots where accidents exist. And if you'll see, the I-40 interchange is listed. Also printed off, we are part of a safety study through Williamson County. It says draft because it's not been published, we're still in the weeds of it. But in some of the data they have pulled, they have also identified that spot at the interstate as a traffic issue. So Ethan has, where we can pull up any of that if you want it on the overhead. I will kind of step aside, let y'all ask any questions to TDOT. They, I just can't tell you how great they have been. I cannot speak. In speed, you know, we don't always think of TDOT as being fast, but they have, the initial letter came out sometime in April to the deputy governor, Eli, who is, was the commissioner. And they have just moved this process along, knowing that this was something that we wanted to move forward with. So I will step aside and if you have any more questions, you know, for me after TDOT. If you'll welcome Danielle Higwood and Caleb Smith, if y'all have time here.
Good evening, everybody.
Bree, excuse me for one second. Bree, can you put ClickShare up?
Go ahead.
Everybody, thank you, Ms. Patty, thank you, Mayor Anderson and Board of Commissioners. We appreciate the invite to come out and speak on this opportunity. First, I want to...
And for the record, let's just get your names and addresses first, just for the record, okay?
Sure. I'm Caleb Smith. I work for TDOT, Region 3, Preconstruction Division, and I manage the Traffic Design section in there. I'm from Manchester, Tennessee.
And I'm Danielle Higwood. I'm the TDOT Program Manager. I manage several programs, including safety, interchange lighting, economic development, and I live in Cotton Town, Tennessee.
Thank you.
So first, I just want to say thank you to the city and for, I know you, Ms. Patty and us have been in conversations and there was a lot of hustling trying to figure out what the city can do with these funds. And we really appreciate the opportunity for you guys being proactive and looking to partner with the department. This is a very good program that we offer partnering with local agencies. You mentioned safety. Lighting is a proven safety countermeasure by the Federal Highway Administration. It's proven to reduce crashes at hotspots like interchanges and intersections, especially this particular interchange is what we would call a partial cloverleaf interchange where you guys are familiar with it, where you have to slow down and to exit off the interstate. So it's very beneficial to have those areas lit up, what we call conflict points, those areas lit up like that. And so what we did was we got our headquarters Traffic Design Division, they put together this, it is a high-level conceptual preliminary lighting design. The circles are, in yellow is, each one of these circles, I believe there's eight of them, are what we call a high... are what we call high-mass lighting poles, and the yellow circles is what you would, what you would imagine is the light distribution that's being put off there. And so the goal would be to light up the area, obviously, but particularly to light up what we call conflict points. Your intersections, your diverges from the interstate, and your merge points onto the interstate. So that's, that's the goal. As you mentioned, it's a 50-50 cost share. We did a very preliminary cost estimate on this. I believe currently we're sitting at just over $2 million, so 50% would be roughly $1 million to the city. What we would look at is, and Danielle can speak to the schedule, but in the design, once we get into the design phase, what we would look at is we would, at that point, we would build a project team, and we would reach out to the city to have a local representative. And, and that's where, the city would be, would be offered the opportunity to work with us through the design project as we refine the design to figure out how exactly we can, we can fit this project best to the city's needs. So I'll step aside and let Danielle talk a little about, about the schedule.
Thank you so much. So high-level, 24 months for project development. We would not begin that until the contract with the City of Fairview is fully executed. We can't authorize any funds on this project until such time. We currently have the construction for this project shown in fiscal year FY '28. That is published on our website. If for some reason this didn't pass tonight, that would ultimately be removed when we updated that plan. That is a long look at it. We would likely get that project out to construction sooner. So as long as the funds are available and the design plans are done, you would be looking at a little bit earlier than July 1st, July 2027. And then you're looking at 12 to 18 months, a very conservative estimate for construction time. Just to give you an idea, we recently let a similar project for Joby Jackson in Murfreesboro. That timeline, we let that in March, and it's expected to be completed in May of the following year. So there is some lead time on purchasing the poles for that high-mass lighting. Once we bid out a project and accept a low bidder, it takes 30 to 60 days to execute that contract. So you won't immediately see construction happening, but there's a lot of things going on in the background. From our standpoint, once this is approved, the first thing y'all would see is somebody out getting survey information just at that interchange area to figure out exactly where the footers for those poles are gonna go. There's a utility coordination process to make sure that we don't conflict with any utilities in the area or need to make utility adjustments to address the locations for those footers. And that's basically it on the schedule. And then I know Patty brought up what your monthly bill for that would look like. For the Goose Creek Interchange, where we've done this interchange lighting, their utility bill for the interchange lighting runs anywhere from $360 a month to $450 a month. So that would be a cost that the city would, would take on as part of this project. We will not, we don't maintain those, so that's part of the local programs agreement that Mayor Anderson received probably in the last few weeks.
Mayor?
Yes.
Who maintains these on a normal basis? Would it be the city or?
So yeah, the city would be responsible for the maintenance, but generally what happens is you're going to get into an agreement with your local power company, and they're going to maintain that for you.
Okay.
Okay. Before any other questions, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We'll continue with questions.
Is there gonna be a lot, so the yellow is the outside of the lighting, is there light pollution past the yellow? Is there light pollution past the yellow?
Light pollution? I am not familiar with, with that. See, these are called photometrics. I could definitely get that information for you on, on the pollution aspect of it, but that is not something I have, I have on me.
One more question, Mayor. Do we, does this fall under our insurance policy? Or is this insured by someone else, by TDOT, by the state? Or is this a rider on, under our insurance? I'm just concerned if, say, it falls on somebody, on a vehicle, or someone crashes into it. I'm concerned about liability.
It would become city property if we need to pay the electric bill, so it would be covered by our insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both for being here tonight. You have quite a commute home afterwards, so really appreciate your time and your being here. And thank you for your presentation. Can you tell us about an impact that a similar project may have had on another similarly situated city? And explain in, I guess, some detail what the positive side is of investing in this kind of project?
So I can't speak for a specific example, but what I, what I can say is we have, we have a few of these underway right now. We have one in Mount Juliet. We have the one in Murfreesboro that she mentioned, that Danielle mentioned. And I can always point back to, I mean, we at TDOT, we're very data-driven. And so when we have proven research out there that shows, and I could pull the actual number for you, but there, the, these projects are proven to reduce crashes by a certain percentage, and that the Federal Highway Administration releases these statistics, and they call them crash reduction factors. And so lighting projects are, are a part of that that they publish. And there's, there is, there are public, public statistics out there on what these projects can, how they impact crash safety on the interstate. And they are very, very effective.
Thank you. I was listening to you speak, Ms. Danielle, and you were saying that, you know, we would need to move forward tonight. You'd have to have an agreement in order to stay on a timeline. But I would like to ask if it would be possible to have that sort of information for us to consider before we took a vote, if the rest of the board agreed with me, to give us just a little bit more time to consider. Because this is a, this is a sum of money, and it would be helpful to have clear indications of exactly how this could be expected to help. I mean, would that be, would that be feasible if we asked for a little bit more time to just review a little bit more information about that?
I don't have a problem with it. I'm just letting you know that y'all can sign the contract whenever you're ready. It just, we can't authorize any funds until we have a local agreement in place. So whatever time you need, and if you need something written about a tentative schedule, we're happy to send that to you. But it will be tentative based on the timing and the signing of the contract, because once y'all sign it, it does have to go back to our commissioner for signature and through our legal office as well.
And I just have one other question. I see you leaning forward, so. This is, you may not know the answer to this, but these are really sharp turns. I'm not sure lighting is going to fix everything, so, and this isn't something that I've heard discussed. But if we invested in a, in a project like this, say at some point, we were able to do something with that intersection, with this, with the ramps and actually straighten them out a little bit or do something, would there be any kind of help in relocating these, that like we wouldn't have to start all over again and reinvest the full sum of money? Have you ever seen any sort of project like that happen with a problematic?
Typically, typically that would be, fall under the utility relocations for that project. So that would be coordinated with any interchange improvements, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
And those are typically federal, interchange improvements are typically federally funded, so there would be federal funding available for that, where this is 100% state-funded on our, on our side.
Mayor?
Yes.
You just said that this would be 100% state-funded. How come, why would we invest 50%? Like, why would we do like a 50-50? I'm just curious.
TDOT's portion is 100%.
No, no, I get that, but why wouldn't the state fund this 100%?
The program requirements are a 50-50 cost share. That's for all communities. That's not specific to Fairview or Williamson County. That's for all communities.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
That was the same with Kingston Springs, Lit Up There Interchange. It was a 50-50 match back in those days. But one question I have was for the TDOT people. Do y'all have any data about how it would improve possible development there as far as commercial development, that type thing?
I don't believe that's something that we track as part of our interchange lighting program. Our, our focus is really gonna be on the safety aspect of it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor? There was a lot of timeline in there and a lot of this and that, and I'm not gonna lie, it's kinda challenging to keep up with it all. What was your, ultimately, when would the physical construction of this hypothetically begin, and the completion of this project hypothetically end?
So I think worst-case scenario, you're looking at 36 to 48 months from the time the contract is signed to construction completion. You're looking at 24-ish months until the project gets bid out for construction. And then we would open bids and move forward from there.
So project completion is most likely 28, 29, is what we're talking?
Right. We currently have it programmed in FY '28 for construction, which would begin that, our FY '28 is July 1, 2027.
Okay. Thank you.
May I say something here? I think I know where you're going with this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things about our, our bond issue is, is we have till July, I mean till December 15th, 2026. And, you know, and I, you know, I kinda feel like this is where you're going. One of the things I addressed early on is, you know, well, that's too late for us. Yeah, I've gotta have this money spent before then. It's, well, you can go ahead and put that money in a tip or something with, through the local government investment pool, which you've already put your investment in, and it sits there. So on our books, it's spent. So that was a pro on my end.
Your intuition was correct. That's where I was headed. I do have a follow-up to that, though.
Go ahead.
So at whatever point within the timeframe that that money needs to be spent, we commit that, and those funds are considered spent.
Correct.
There's still some timeframe, however, before construction begins.
Correct.
In the world we live in, crazy things happen every day. So my question is, is the price of this project locked once our funds are committed? Or if a 2027 COVID comes around and material costs go through the roof, are we looking at a construction cost doubling or increasing at any fraction, to be fair?
I mean, there's always the possibility of increases. There's also the possibility of decreases. This is a conservative estimate of over $2 million, so I believe we're in the ballpark based on what we let recent projects for. But there's no guarantee that that cost is not gonna go up or down.
Sure. Would it be fair to ask how many TDOT, TDOT projects come in under budget?
I actually just had one come in, $10 million under budget, so.
Quite, quite a sizable project, it sounds. Well, hopefully, we're as lucky if we move forward with this, so we can get some savings, because that seems to be rare in this world.
I agree. It happens, but it goes, it goes both ways, so we try to balance things out, but yes.
All right. Thank you for the information. There's a lot to be considered. I think from a, from a safety perspective, there's not a lot of argument to be made. From a need, from an economic development position, the positivity that it would gain in that area, I think as investment looks to put hotels and restaurants and everything, there's, the police chief, I believe, has stepped out. But I think he would agree that where there's more light, there's less crime. That pretty much goes hand in hand. More light, less accidents. Fire chief would probably attest to, as the data attests to. So from that regard, I don't think there's any concern, at least for me and maybe others, but for me, there's not. It all comes down to the funding of it, which, yes, we have the funds, absolutely. But I think that there's some, as she just mentioned, potential for increases over time with, with just things outside of our control and with other commissioners' concerns. I'm wondering if it would be potentially possible to have a workshop on this matter next month to discuss the details that you said and the facts that you said that you have around safety, that you said you do not have currently with you, that might be presented to us, so the community can see that this is a good investment. It's not just, we've got money in our pocket and we need to spend it. It's, there's benefit to it, and it's a real benefit. And as much as I am sure you're, you're, you're accurate with saying, you know, this data exists, I think it would be beneficial as a community to hear that data. But that, that, other than that, I personally don't think that this is a bad project. I would like to hear a little bit more, as Mr. Doherty and I have spoken earlier in the week regarding the bond money and the issue with that, and you just addressed, addressed it to some degree. But that we do have other projects that that bond money was initially earmarked for. And, and again, you've addressed this with me earlier, but if you could just speak to the, the new fire department off of Northwest Highway, the realignment of Northwest Highway, the intersection of Northwest Highway and 96, and that the timeline on, on those things have changed due to factors outside of our control, is from what I've been hearing from you.
I'm gonna try to do this as simply as possible. City Fairview took out a bond of $9,900,000 in 2021. When I took over, city manager, the plan was, was a little vague, but one of the major factors was Northwest Highway intersection with 96. The plan was to keep $5 million available in the bond money to complete that project. Where now, I could see that we were gonna be tight on that, and then as we kept getting closer and closer, I became concerned, and then I finally got to the point, it's time to look at other options, because we're in the right-of-way phase now, just starting. He said it could take nine months plus to finish that, and then you go to bid, and then you go, and then before you know it, it's, it's December 15th, 2026. So I began looking at other options that fell into, we've got some flexibility in what we can do with the bond money. This, I talked to bond counsel. This interstate lighting project, bond counsel said that's, that's a great use of the, of the funds. That, that balls right in to it. So, you know, I, I feel like, you know, it's, it's, it's not very often you get a chance to spend a dollar and get, get another dollar. You know, we're spending a million, getting a million. We're lighting it up. We're, we're helping the aesthetics of Fairview. We're, we're helping the safety in Fairview. I feel like it's a win-win for the citizens and the city all around. I know there are, just like as any other thing you do in life, things can happen. But I felt like TDOT does this every day, and they, you know, you go to Kingston Springs, they're lit up. You come to us, we're the Black Hole. We go to Dixon, they're lit up. So, you know, I'm, I just felt like it was an opportunity for the, for the city to step out and, and do something that, that is gonna help the area.
Yep. And completely agree with you. I think, like I said, from a safety, from a logical, it, it makes sense. You'd, we'd wanna do that. I guess my concern is, and we all just went through budget. Our budget's relatively tight as it is. I just wanna make sure that we have, you know, if we're gonna have to take on additional debt to finish the 96 fire department, or the Northwest Highway Fire Department, and that whole project as a whole, that we were considering this money going towards. And I know this is 1 million of 5, right? That, a lot of that money has said and gone already, so it's, it's, it's kind of irrelevant, I guess. But if this project goes and increases by half a million dollars before the payment is actually made, then we're, we have to come up with $250,000 again. $250,000 for our little town is quite a bit of money. We would have to make some significant adjustments to make, make that work. And I, and this isn't really anything concerning you all. It's just making sure that, that we're being fiscally responsible or at least putting ourselves in a position that we don't feel like we're- feel like we're getting ahead of our skis, for lack of a better phrase.
One thing that, you know, I thought about was maybe offering to put in more. But, you know, then I don't want to take any of it back. Because, you know, at the end of the day, if, if I've got answers to the comptroller of the state of Tennessee, if we don't have these funds spent by December fifteenth, twenty twenty six, and I do not want to have that conversation.
I agree. I, I, I would like to hear your, your thoughts on the potential of a one month delay. If you, if we could vote on this, I, next meeting, a month from, a month from now, and have a workshop to hear the data points that you all said that you could provide. I think from the community's perspective, by no means against this, I think it is a completely reasonable project. But I'm wondering, is there, is there any fallout to that? I mean, we're talking about forty eight month project. I can't imagine that thirty days is somehow detrimental to that timeline.
It, it's not. We, you know, it would only be if another community requested an interchange lighting, and I'm not talking to anybody else right now about interchange lighting. That would be the only way that somebody would get ahead of you for that, those funds. I will add, as to what Tom said, the contract that we provided to Mayor Anderson does request the full deposit upfront for our current estimated cost. So if there were cost overruns on the project, that would not be requested till probably sixty days prior to construction. So you're looking at FY twenty seven. If that makes any difference, or FY twenty eight, that makes any difference to you?
That very well may not be my problem at that point in time, but, right now, but yes, it's good to know. Thank you for that.
I'd like to follow up too on.
Oh, no, please.
Just, I want to touch a little bit on your, on your cost concern, which is totally understandable, but I'd like to try to ease a little bit of that concern because one, one of the things that we would do when we, when we get into the design phase is we, we can, if we discover that, you know, inflation rates or whatever has happened are becoming an issue for, for the city, we can tailor this design. Like I said, this, this is a, this is a pretty high level conceptual, you know, estimate. But a, as you can see, we, this is, this is projected to light the entire interchange up. As I mentioned earlier, that really the, the ultimate goal is to light the conflict points. And so, you know, there, there are a lot of cities out there who, who, they, they love to light the bridges up and, but it's not necessarily as important as the intersections or the merges and the diverges. So there's, there's other types of lighting, you know, with, not to get too in the weeds, but you have offset lighting, which is more like your, your typical street lighting that can offer more concentrated light in certain areas where you might, where you might be interested in having it. So I do believe there, there are options that we can work together on if, if we, if it's determined at that time that budget's becoming a concern. But I just wanted to touch on that.
Oh, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I just wanted to point out that a month from today is a Sunday because a month from yesterday is our, is our strategic planning session. So it's actually really good timing to go a month out and then to, we wouldn't vote anything on it, on that date because that's just a strategic planning session. But the following meeting would be the next time that we'd be able to vote on it if we were to go with like a month long timeline, which I think is actually great timing.
I, I, I may have misspoke. I didn't mean quite literally a month. I just meant the.
Oh, sure.
Two meetings from this.
But I just wanted to point, I thought that was great timing that it is actually a month from the strategic planning session. So it gives us time to, to get to that and gives us something to think about.
I would just ask that we have a list of questions well prior to that to make sure that we're gathering all the information that you need.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one question for Mr. Doherty. The, the money that we're going to be putting as a deposit or wherever that money's going right now, would that be in an interest bearing account?
You have two options. You can deposit it directly with T dot in our local programs office, or you can deposit it with a local government investment pool, Department of Treasury, which I do believe gains interest.
Okay, because we will be paying a, what, two point oh eight percent on that?
No, we, we will not, we wouldn't be paying any interest. We, they may be, if we put it in there in their name, they may be getting some interest off that money, which could work to our favor if there is an increase in cost. But I don't believe that the city would be on the hook to pay any of that interest.
No, I'm saying that we would, we're, we're actually making that, the payments back to the bond, correct? At a two percent interest rate?
Correct.
So if we put that into an interest bearing account, we would possibly get, recoup some of that interest. I'm just, it's a quick question.
Yeah, our, we're, we're, we're in an LGI, we're in a, not LGIP, but we're in a, something they call an SLG account. And it's gets substantially more than, than the rate we're being charged. I'd have to look to see exactly what that is. We're, we're averaging anywhere from fifteen to twenty two thousand a month on interest right now and interest revenue from the bond sitting there. So, and I know we've, we've made over half a million dollars in interest on the bond so far since exception on interest. So I guess, I think the number is not large enough to, to re, on a million dollars to be concerned about losing that revenue in my mind. I think it's more important to get, get these funds working for us and getting it out of our liability with the state comptroller.
From your perspective, Mr. Doherty, would there be any risk to that money not being spent in the time at which it needs to be spent if a, if a thirty day period was taken?
The only concern I have is what they, if somebody comes in and, and wants to do it i- in the next thirty days and they sign a contract and the money's gone. That's the only risk that I see that we have. As she said, nobody's, they're not talking to anybody else right now. Somebody might call them tomorrow. I don't know. But that's the only risk we have. Unless they can tell me something else.
I mean, it takes probably two weeks to get a contract out anyway, so.
They would have to wait till their meeting and vote on it and it would, I think we're safe. I mean, because I would.
That's correct.
I feel like if we had a meeting, a workshop on this, there would be resolution to this decision that night. Unless I am the only one that feels that way and a vote wants to happen tonight, then we can do that as well.
No, I, I think I agree, I agree with you.
Same.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, if we delay it for that workshop, would you have it also on the agenda that night for approval?
Yes, sir. I think that would be the best course of action, just to have dedicated time to speak to not only their, their side of things, but also just the financial side of things and make sure that we feel comfortable with this decision and then make it, have a, have a vote that, that evening.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand on the workshop, which they've all said thirty days is not going to make or break anything and, which is great, but just make sure that we have clarity of, so the workshop and having a little more time would help you decide what, what data you want, like how many wrecks actually happened on the interstate. And I think I heard what economic impact it, what businesses came through. So is, if that's the case, is there, if there's something else I missed that y'all wanted from the questions?
A gentleman from T dot mentioned some statistics on lighting of these interchanges, intersections and the rate and reduction in, in accidents. I think any data that you have on it that's going to push this, I guess, not necessarily push it, but just be more informative as to what, why this is a necessary instead of just, you know, a theoretical or just taking your word for it.
Absolutely.
Not, mean no offense by that.
Yeah, no, I'm untaking it all. And Ms. Patty and I talked before and the, we can pull individual crash reports at this location and that's no problem either. So we, we can have all that, the actual day, like a three year crash history at this location as well as what we would predict. You call it crash prediction because, you know, you, you can't predict the future, but proven history of what, of what's happened at similar locations like this in the past. We can definitely have that data.
Would that include information like time of day?
Yes, yes it would.
Potentially, just again, to, to make the case to those that might be questioning whether this is a project that's worth it or not. It would be beneficial to have also data in comparison to potentially the Kingston Springs, which is probably a relative, I don't know, they've got so many gas stations there, they might have more traffic going in and out of there than we do. But Dixon most certainly does. And if it was showing that our accident percentage was anywhere near one of those that is most likely higher trafficked areas, I think that would be beneficial information to have as well.
Patty, could we maybe send questions to you to collect and then send to them? And that way we can have a little bit of time to think about it also?
Yes, that, that would be great. I did kind of inquire from a lot of y'all if you did have questions for, we could be ready tonight, but I'm glad to get more, you know, either if you thought of more stuff or you get away from this meeting and think we can definitely do that because, you know, obviously they don't live close, so we're, and they're kind to come tonight and help answer those questions. So that would be great. I'd appreciate you doing that.
To that point, I have no problem with you zooming into a workshop next year, next month. There is no reason, I don't think, for you to come here to face us and answer these questions in person. If you would like to save yourself the trip, I would be perfectly okay with that.
My turn? Okay. So back in the nineties, I was getting off the interstate. We've got a very unique situation. It curves around one way and it also curves around another way. And if anybody's gotten on or off the interstate on ninety six down, you know, past the Flying Jay, in the nineties, I was actually coming home and I was going down Interstate forty and getting off. And if you know, there's, there's two lanes to get off there. So a tractor trailer had, he was beside me, a little bit ahead of me, and it is super dark. I'm just trying to give some facts here, okay? I'll do whatever the board wants to do, but I'm just trying to give some facts. This was the late nineties. I was getting off the exit to go home. I actually lived on Highway ninety six at the time. And a tractor trailer was a little in front of me. I saw him with, with that intersection, the clover, it's a half clover leaf on both sides. It's, it's just very dark. And I don't know that he really realized the curve was that serious of a sharp curve and he tipped. And I was at his back wheels. I don't know if anybody's ever been that close to almost an accident with a tractor trailer truck, but I was like, well, I, I just saw my life flash in front of my eyes. I slammed on my brakes, he flipped, and thank the Lord, I went off the ramp, like off into the side area and he did not hit me. But that's just one incident that I was involved in. That whole intersection or that whole exit and on ramp right there, plus the businesses that are in that area, if anybody's been down there, it's like, you know, the hotel and the liquor store. And then we used to have, for those of you who have lived here a long time, we had the Phantom and Drag Strip and all of that area down through there, it's very dark and I don't feel very safe. Now, I've done ride share in that area where if you, down near Drag Strip and the Phantom, there's like an area and you can park and do ride share into town. I don't do it anymore, but I used to ride share because I worked in Nashville and lived out here. So I do know how unsafe and especially during daylight savings time. When it's daylight savings time, most of us are coming home in the dark. So it's just a little, it, it's a little worse at that time. But we're really wanting, or at least I, I'll speak for myself, I would really love to see that whole area improved. So when people get off that ramp and they come into Fairview, they're like, wow, this is Fairview, not what it is right now. Very dark, very kind of, if, if I were going to get off that ramp and I saw what I saw and it just being kind of a little scary, I probably would get back on and go down to the next ramp. That where it's lit, I can see what's going on, I can see the gas station, and it's just a more inviting, you know, place for people to enter our community. So we've got, you know, I hope every, everybody understands how the bond money works. I think Tom's explained it twenty five thousand times. So I think it's, it's just the bond money has got to be spent by December of twenty six, which we all know how fast time goes by. That will be here before we know it. So I really feel like good projects that we enter into, that we have a matching, that, you know, a match that's all ready to go because it's not that easy. I go to our Greater Nashville Regional Council meetings every month and we, we vie for fu- we vie for matching funds to do all, all kinds of things over the community, but so does everybody else. So for this to be available to us with such a great opportunity to light that whole area and make it more inviting for, you know, maybe a hospital, maybe hotel or restaurants or just people getting off and coming into our community to maybe get some gas or a restroom or something like that, that money has to be spent anyway. And we don't want to get into a situation where we get down to the wire and we don't get our money spent because that's not going to be a good thing with comptroller. So I've just been thinking about projects that, you know, are ready to go so that we can get the money spent and to get a matching grant like this, with them putting a million dollars into our community, you know, I just feel like it's a good opportunity. That's, that's just how I feel about it. Now, one thing I did, a question I did have is what if it comes in under budget and we get money back, Mr. Doherty?
I personally hope we don't get any money back, but we've got other things we could spend it on. But I, I'm hoping they're, they do this and they know, but, you know, I'm hoping it, it, it all goes to the project.
And I'm, I am happy to, you know, agree with what the board wants to do. And if you feel like you need time to look at, you know, the safety and possibilities of, of development or whatever in that area, I know how I feel, but I'm, I'm amicable to agree to whatever the board wants.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Back when Kingston Springs got their lighting project, I was in conversations with their city manager at the time, which I was the city manager here. We didn't have the funding to, to go after ourselves at the time. We didn't have a bond issue or anything. We were kind of low on funds in those days, but I would have loved to have had it back then. Mike McClanahan, who is now with the state of Tennessee in the beautification department. Probably a lot of interstate projects y'all might work in conjunction with, but he's a very nice gentleman, but he's always was very helpful on his discussion about Kingston Springs, how it seemed to help their, their interstate, their interchange there. But I think during that same time, we possibly, had we were able to do that, we possibly would have been able to secure the hotel. We didn't get the hotel and I think if we had the, the interchange lit up, we would have probably gotten it. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I got, you're, encouraged me to ask another question. Mr. Doherty, if, if this project was not to move forward, if we did not decide to go, go with this project, how, how difficult would you, would it be to spend that, the remaining balance? remaining balance of the bond money by the date in which it needs to be spent?
We would, we would just go to a different route, a different plan. We would just keep seeking. We've got, we've got other areas, stormwater, we've got issues, we've got areas that we can improve, but I don't, we don't have any that's going to give us dollar for dollar for our investment like this.
100% agree. I think there is extreme value whenever you're getting a match. I just wanted to ask the question. In addition to, with what you just said though, none of those projects being currently on the books, you would have to, there would be quite some time that would pass and no guarantee in which those projects would take place. So there is a challenge there as well, correct?
Yes, and as everyone knows, I don't care what government entity you're involved in, everything goes slower than you think it's going to. So I mean, it's just, that's the, that's the, and I think that's, it's that way for a reason, you know, so that, you know, you don't knee jerk anything. But, but I feel like, you know, we would, we would, we would reassess and, and come up with a, with a plan.
I guess the reason I'm asking this is I sit here and, and think and to Ms. Carroll's point, we did speak about this earlier and there was questions and her and I had quite a lengthy conversation on this topic. And though there are issues that, or not issues, there's information I think I would like to have at this moment in time. Logic kind of answers the question for you, right? Lit areas are going to have less accidents, lit areas are going to have less crime, lit areas are going to be more appetizing to investment. I don't know, as I sit and think, maybe it's pointless to delay it a month because I mean, I can tell you I'm 99% going to vote for this in a month anyway. So that's where I'm at with this. So I don't know. The rest of you can discuss.
If I might, I, Mr. Dougherty, you just said no knee jerk reactions. This was put on our desk on Thursday when it came out with the agenda. It's 1.1 million dollars. We have a planning session coming up to talk about strategy. I agree, dollar for dollar match is a really wonderful thing, but again, we have to pick a strategy. So I think this is great. I agree, but it's not the only great thing that's on the table. And on this document that you gave us, we've got unallocated projects, the historic whole village construction, public works, lots of upgrades, stormwater projects. We still need to spend money and I don't know where we are with some of these, like the welcome signs. Do we have a viable estimate on that? I just, it's a lot of money and since they've already told us that there's no harm in waiting, I agree, but I do think it matters what time of day the accidents happen. I do think that data matters. It's why data is important. So if, if the accidents are happening in the daytime, then we could light up that intersection bright as the surface of the sun. It's not going to change a thing if maybe signage is what would fix the problem. And I think that's where we need some information from perhaps the police, the fire departments, and just to know what we're actually looking at. And, and it's nothing against this great generous offer from the state and I appreciate the time that the representatives from TDOT have put into this, but because we've been talking about this for, I mean, a very long time, I think that is a good indication that we need to spend a minute on it and, and think about it. And we did speak earlier this week, I spoke with Mr. Dougherty and Ms. Carroll both, and I shared some of these thoughts then and wanted to see what the rest of the board thought. And the fact that we're still sitting here asking these questions tells me that we do need a little bit of time to think about it. I hear what you're saying, Mayor Anderson, and I, I understand, but it's not going anywhere if we take a little bit of time to think about it. They've already assured us of that. And I just want to be sure, before we take taxpayer dollars to the tune of 1.1 million dollars and allocate it and that money could go up. And I want to, I want to think about what if it's not 1.1 million dollars? What happens if we don't spend that full amount on this and money comes back? So I think we need to, we need to look at this as part of an overarching strategy. I don't know if I'm 99% yes or no on it, because I don't have the data that would help me make that decision. And so it's just impossible without knowing. And then knowing, well, what's the, what's the plan for that area? If we do invest in this, then what's the immediate plan on economic development at that intersection? That's something this board would probably have to discuss as part of our strategy. So then what's the investment beyond safety? Or do we have other needs?
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I make a motion to defer 11I till after a workshop?
If you may make a motion to defer. I would suggest to be a motion to defer workshop to be scheduled on whatever date. There's a main motion on the floor, but this is a priority motion, a motion to defer.
Right.
Mr. Buffalini, the date of the second meeting in August is August 21st.
So we would have a workshop prior during the...
What would the workshop date be, Ethan?
August 21st at 6:00 PM.
So the motion would be to defer for voting agenda on August 21st with a workshop, workshop to precede the voting meeting.
Okay.
That, that would be the motion you'd want to make.
Before you make that motion, Mr. Buffalini, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Again, sitting here thinking about it and burden hand, two in the bush, and it is money that match for match is huge. I mean, I will remind everybody that we just dropped $2 million on land so we could shoot fireworks, which as much as I enjoy the July 3rd event, there was very little thought, I felt, put into that. And I was the only one on this board that voted no on that. So as far as fiscal responsibility goes, to get a match out of this for $1 million, it's $1,014,000, I believe, correct? Is that what the number is? I mean, I, I, I agree, having the data in hand, and I, I know I was making this argument 15 minutes ago, but there's just 0% chance that adding lighting is somehow not, it is absolutely going to have an impact on reducing accidents and reducing crime and increasing appetite for that area to be appealing to others. That's all I have. Mr. Hall would like a recess for five minutes. Mr. Hall? If we may.
Sorry.
Five-minute recess.
I'll wrap this up, but I, and in that break, and Mr. Greer brought up a fantastic point that I think should be made too, from a safety aspect. Anytime there is an accident, the people that serve this community, that protect this community are down there on the side of the highway and lighting is absolutely going to keep them safer as well. I know they've got lights on their rigs and flashing lights, but you can see videos every single day of, of officers and firemen having accidents, having, being involved in accidents on the side of the highway. So I, with every accident that does take place, that is a data point, you have them being put in harm's way, I think the lighting only makes them have higher odds of coming home at the end of the day as well. And that's all I have.
Mayor?
Yes.
They also said that it wouldn't, even if we delayed for one month, it wouldn't change the completion of the project. So I don't think it's a bad idea to kind of work a strategy and come up with a couple of answers for our questions. It's not going to delay the project at all. So with that, I would like to make a motion to defer 11I till after a workshop dated 8/21/2025 at 6:00 PM for the workshop.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Nay. Vote on the original motion, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11, new business, 8.2, Resolution 3125, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Fairview, Tennessee, of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of three citizens to the Planning Commission. The way this is going to work is each one of you who has submitted an application will come to the podium, tell your name, address, a little bit about yourself, your education and experience. That will give us an opportunity to get to know you and, you know, just kind of find out a little experience that you have. And then after that, after each one of you has spoken, then we will start with a motion or, I'm sorry, we will entertain for any of the commissioners to make a nomination for an individual. That individual will be voted on, three votes is approved, and when we get three people who are filling the seats, then the nominations will cease. Mr. Carter?
Mayor, I do have one question about that process. Will we hear from everyone first prior to making the first nomination?
Yes, that's what I said. Each one will come up before we start any of that. And then we will do the, we will do the nominations, thank you, whoever said that, thank you. We will, just lost it. We will do the nominations individually. The first three people that get a majority, three people, three commissioners or myself, then they will fill the seats for the Planning Commission and we have three open seats. Mr. Carter, is that appropriate?
Are you going to nominate, for example, for the Planning Commission, are you going to nominate all nine and then top three vote getters and place them in their seats? Or are you going to do each seat individually?
I think we should do a nomination for an individual vote, nomination for an individual vote, and the ones who get three, which would be a majority, first three that get three will fill the seats. Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
There's many ways to do that, so.
Okay. All right. So...
Mayor, if you could ask Bree to go to the next slide. There you go.
All right. So as we see on the slide, we have Haley Schulist, Andrew Mitchell, Sheila Cook. Okay, Todd Gatewood has gotten in touch with me. He is withdrawing at this time due to a work conflict with being able to make the meeting. So we will not consider Mr. Todd Gatewood. We have Demetrius Ritt, Leon Penny Packer, Joseph Smith, Rod Dawson, and Julia Hill. So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to call you in order then, so everything's kind of, kind of run smoothly. So first, we will hear from Ms. Haley Schulist.
My name is Haley Schulist. My address is 7165 Kyle's Creek Drive. Background and education, I am originally from Johnson City in northeast Tennessee, but have been in Fairview just a little over 10 years. Have served on the Planning Commission for the last six years. Received an undergraduate degree from ETSU in interior design and a master's from Lipscomb in sustainability in green construction and have since post-graduation worked in multifamily and commercial real estate world as an owner's rep. So working alongside all aspects of commercial construction for the owner, be it tenant or building owner. We have, my husband and I and our two kids have really enjoyed Fairview and my kids attend Fairview Elementary and I have really enjoyed being on the Planning Commission and giving back to the community with the commercial and multifamily experience that I have. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Schulist, thank you for being here tonight. In your time that you've served on the Planning Commission so far, what's one thing that you, that stands out to you or accomplishment you're proud of or, or just something that you'd like to say you've accomplished while you've been there?
Learning the process of being on the Planning Commission has taken a long time to figure out like the appropriate, how to answer, how to do that, this and that. That, that takes a long time for anyone to learn. So being able to come back with the knowledge that there's not a steep ramp of someone who doesn't understand the last six years of, of the projects that we have pushed through or discussed and planned for is important, I think. Being part of the group to help over create new zoning ordinances and neighborhood regulations, that's been great to, being able to change, have a say in that change going forward.
No problem.
Next would be Mr. Andrew Mitchell.
My name's Andrew Mitchell and I live at 7309 Buckhorn Court in Fairview, Tennessee, in the city. I'd like to first off formally request that maybe we serve some coffee at these meetings in the future. Tom, if you want to add that to the city budget, I seconded and approved and all of that stuff. Seriously, Mayor Anderson and Board of Commissioners, thank you guys again. I stood here before, a couple of months back, but for all that you do for the city here and every day out there, a lot of us in this room see it and it's kind of inspired us to be here and want to take part in this. It's, it's a big part of that. The last time I was here, I spoke a lot about who I am, my qualifications, so I don't think it's good to just like rewrite that speech and speak it again. I want to speak a little bit to how I see this. So in front of me here is our, is our city seal. And on that seal, it says progress and prosperity. Progress is defined as forward or onward movement to a destination. And prosperity is defined as the condition of being successful or thriving, especially as in economic well-being. Those, those really aren't just words on a seal to me. It's, it's pretty important that they're there. They're a challenge. They're a challenge to each one of us as stewards of this city to make sure that Fairview keeps moving forward towards a thriving future. That's exactly what's motivated me to apply this in the first place. I see Fairview growing, families are moving in, businesses are opening up, opportunities are emerging, but I see growing pains as well. Traffic's increasing, green spaces are shrinking, housing's getting more expensive, and it really feels like that every decision that we make today is going to impact the city for decades. What Fairview needs right now is thoughtful, balanced planning. Growth is inevitable, but prosperity is not. It's up to us to make sure that the growth happens in a way that keeps Fairview livable, affordable, and beautiful. I bring to this role a mindset of collaboration, a respect for the voices of our residents, and a practical understanding of how to weigh long-term goals like our 2040 plan against short-term needs like traffic calming and infrastructure. I don't have all the answers, but I do have a willingness to listen to you, to our neighbors, to developers, and anyone else who calls Fairview home, and to work hard to find solutions that reflect our shared values. If appointed, I commit to doing the work, researching the proposals thoroughly, showing up prepared, asking hard questions, and keeping the best interest of Fairview at heart. I want to help this city write the next chapter of its story, one where progress doesn't mean sacrificing our character and prosperity does not leave anyone behind. So tonight I humbly ask for your vote to appoint me to the Planning Commission. I'm ready to get to work and I would be honored to serve Fairview in this way. So thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the Board of Mr. Mitchell? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Ms. Sheila Cook.
I live at 7422 Swindon Boulevard in Fairview. I've been a resident of Tennessee for over 27 years. I moved to Fairview, Tennessee, from Bartlett, Tennessee in December 2022 after searching for the perfect place to retire. Some of the requirements we had as we researched was we wanted a small, beautiful town, and small is a relative term. It's not Franklin or something big like that, but that's what my husband asked when we looked, not something that big, that massive. But I had some requirements in a smaller town. Shopping, Walmart and a major grocery store, got it. A town that was close enough that I could get to a mall, a Sam's, he could get to Lowe's or my son could get to Lowe's or whatever, within 30 minutes or so. Of course, medical care facilities, and a high-rated hospital, which Vanderbilt is number one in Tennessee. Had to be close because, let's face it, we weren't getting any younger. And the ability to build our house, our retirement house, per our requirements. Fairview checked every box plus many more. Some of my personal experience in building projects, they are personal, I don't work for Realtor or developer, but I've always enjoyed being hands-on with building projects, from custom home designs to engaging with contractors personally. I was very involved with the building and process of our home in Bartlett with many changes to the blueprint. In fact, I'm a very detailed person, if you know. I wrote an 11-page addendum to that contract that the contractors had to initial every page, so we had everything written out. Two years later, it was kind of fun to design a gunite swimming pool for that property, and then a little later to design a detached garage, hire contractors and help with, not help, but oversee, I guess, the building of that detached garage. House in Fairview didn't need as many changes, thank goodness, because we were about two and a half, three hours away. So it was very modern, documented, loved the house professionally, you ask about that. I have over three decades of IT experience creating and using technologies. My bachelor of science was computer science with a minor in math. I'm a certified project manager, which that's skilled in planning, problem-solving, budgeting, and communication from team members to C-suite executives. I have experience with conflict resolution and negotiating resolutions and solutions. I will ask questions as I did as a business analyst. I think Patty's been the end of that sometime on a project. This doesn't mean I don't agree, but I don't assume anything. You'll find that out about me, even if I think I know what it is, I don't assume, and I want to know all the answers and understand the aspects of all the requests. Some of my strengths are, I offer innovative strategic thinking, attention to details, problem solver, negotiator, active listener, critical thinker, communicator, organizer, and planner. I retired last year, a little early by most standards, but I wanted to start enjoying Fairview, what Fairview has to offer, and meeting some of the people, which I have in my new community. I'm the president of the Fairview Senior Group. I've learned how to play pickleball and mahjong, got to work everything. I've met a lot of great people. Some of them have been lifelong residents of Fairview, and many are transplants like myself, looking for a new community, and I think that's important. I've learned history of the place, what's good, what's bad, what they like. New people, bringing in new ideas, that doesn't always mean change. Anytime I went to a different company, new ideas is good, but you've got to make it work with what you're working with. That involves city planning also. In conclusion, Fairview's growth should be sustainable, balancing new residents and new businesses while staying within the city's infrastructure's limits until they are expanded. That doesn't mean they aren't now, but we really should need to watch that. We should be good stewards of our tax dollars as they're spent to keep property taxes as low as possible, many of y'all have heard me say that before. We have a great natural resource in Bowie Park that has been entrusted to Fairview to enjoy and to take care of, especially as developments are being built around it. I believe developers, builders, and companies should be held accountable and follow the highest standards and ordinances. The Fairview citizens, they deserve this, which is all of us. I'm interested in serving on the Planning Commission Board to help Fairview grow responsibly, strategically, and in line with the city's vision and their ordinances. I do research, anybody knows me, I try to research what I can. I would like to say thank you to the Board for what you do for Fairview and to the city employees, because I've talked to many of y'all, and thank you for what you've done. I'm asking the Board of Commissioners to consider me for one of the three in a large pool there, a position for the Planning Board, Planning Commissioners Board. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Demetrius Ritt.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Demetrius Ritt. I live at 7310 Henderson Drive here in Fairview. I'm honored to be here and considered for a role on the Planning Commission. I've dedicated almost my entire professional career of over 30 years to public service across local, state, and federal entities, and my motivation for stepping up today is not for politics, it's to do my best to give back as a civil servant. I began my public service career in the United States Army Reserves, eventually moving over to the Air National Guard, where I humbly retired as a senior intelligence officer after 30 years. Now, if anyone knows anything about the National Guard, the concept is you put the plow down to serve your country when they need you the most. However, my parallel civilian career with my National Guard career started off as a GIS coordinator for the City of Highland Park, Illinois, where I eventually moved on to become a land surveyor, where I became intimately familiar with land use, zoning, civil engineering, planning commissions, all the fun stuff. I transitioned to becoming a police officer for the City of Milwaukee for several years, which then eventually led me to over 20 years of federal service in law enforcement and the intelligence community with multiple three-letter agencies. But one of those jobs brought me to Tennessee in 2011, and I'm grateful it brought me here. So I've been very fortunate to work along anyone from homeless citizens to being on Air Force One with presidential details and all the fancy stuff, but I've also been a kid who grew up on food stamps, didn't have a car, to work my way up professionally. Paid for my own school. I hold a bachelor's degree in geography and urban planning, as well as a master's in business administration and aerospace and defense from the University of Tennessee. Go Vols. I say all this to highlight that I've always been a public servant, and that's all I'm simply trying to do here today. I have a lot of knowledge, a lot of diverse skills that I think I bring to the Planning Commission, besides being able to read ordinances and zoning laws. I think I bring a different perspective, and as a small business owner here in Tennessee, there are no conflicts of resolution or anything that I would have with serving on this board. So if selected, I just want to continue to be a servant leader and do my best to help this city grow and prosper. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Ritt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leon Penney Packer.
I've got some tough acts to follow here, so if anything I had planned to say, I probably just threw it out the window. My name's Leon Penney Packer, and I live at 7129 Triple Crown Lane in Fairview. I've got a four-year college degree at the University of Immaculata in Malvern, Pennsylvania. Simple truth is, I don't have any planning experience. So why am I here? I'll tell you why. Fairview reminds me of a small town I grew up in in southeastern Pennsylvania. It's a small farming town, and every time a farmer would sell his land, the same questions would pop up as they did tonight by some of the citizens. If they sold it to a developer, their land, the questions came up, where's, you know, are there going to be enough resources? Is the traffic going to be able to handle it? And on down the line. So, you know, I took it upon myself, I'm thinking, well, you know, maybe I can make a difference here, because I see the same things happening in Fairview. I'm also spent 11 years living in Southern California, and if anybody who's lived there, in my opinion, the planning that went through where I lived probably wasn't given a lot of thought. There was always, there was a strain on electricity with brownouts. Our water bills probably went up every month, if not every quarter. Traffic, forget about it. The best time to drive there between 12, midnight and 6:00 AM. I don't want another California to be here in Fairview, and, you know, I'm just another concerned citizen who thinks that I might be able to make a difference if elected to the seat on the Planning Commission. That's about it. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Thank you so much. Mr. Joseph Smith.
First, my name is Joseph Smith. I live at 7214 Adenborough Drive, Fairview. My reason for being here, this is some tough acts to follow, I'm not going to allow, but I'm going to give it my best shot. I'm married, been married for 45 years, got one daughter. She's the reason that we moved here. My career is 35 years with the, we moved from South Carolina to here, Columbia, South Carolina. I worked with the Columbia Richland Fire Service for 35 years. I retired as the Assistant Chief of Operations. I had 550 employees, paid and volunteered 28 fire stations. I was the liaison officer between the Fire Service and Richland County. I helped to put the contract between the city and the county together, and we got that going. Also, when I retired, we was working with Fort Jackson Army Basins, Columbia, to get a contract with them to respond off-base to help us. I was also in charge of the logistics department, the purchasing department, the training department. Basically done a little bit of everything. I was a liaison officer with the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division, with Richland County Sheriff's Department, Miami Police Department, Lexington County Sheriff's Department, so let's just office, human resources, and a couple more. Reason I'm here is I like the way Fairview's growing, it's growing good. I'd like to be part of that. I like what I see, and I like what you all have done. I appreciate you and appreciate everything you've done very much. Hopefully, I'll get at least one of your votes. I don't know, but anyway, thank you very much. Questions?
Any questions of Mr. Penney Packer?
Can we find him a job on the fire department? Quite the resume.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, that was Mr. Smith. I said the wrong thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. All right. I think I'd just like saying Penney Packer. That's kind of a cool name. Anyway, Mr. Rod Dawson.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor and Mayor. My name is Rod Dawson. I live at 7517 Nathaniel Woods Boulevard, Fairview, and I want to thank you for considering me for the Planning Commission. I'm deeply invested in the strategic and thoughtful growth of Fairview, both as a long-term resident and someone who has served the community in multiple official capacities. In 2019, I was part of the Steering Committee for the Fairview 2040 Comprehensive Plan, where I helped guide and shape the vision of Fairview's long-term development. My direct involvement means I was uniquely familiar with the goals, principles, and priorities set forth by our community in the 2040 Fairview Plan. Additionally, I served as a Fairview Commissioner for four years, building a proven track record of public service by balancing competing interests and upholding transparency in government. Through those roles, I have built strong relationships with the community members, city staff, and other stakeholders. I've lived in our Fairview town for about 10 years, and together with my wife, we've raised our four children. My kids have attended local Fairview schools, which gives me a direct and personal stake in the educational and civic environment we create. I fully understand what is required of the Planning Commission members. There's a lot of homework. To benchmark each decision against the city's zoning ordinance and the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, I'm prepared to apply the standard consistently, ensuring fair, lawful, and forward-thinking My personal and professional investment in Fairview means I'm dedicated to decisions that support our city's long-term success. I'm eager to serve on the Planning Commission and serve the community I love. Do you have any questions?
Sorry. I didn't know that was it. Sorry. Okay. Any questions of Mr. Dawson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Julia Hill.
Mayor, she did email me earlier today, let me know she may not be able to make it tonight, but she was still interested in being appointed. She has filled out an application for all three boards tonight.
Did she give any information on her application that maybe we could read?
You're more than welcome to read her application.
You want me to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to work very hard to be able to read the handwriting, okay? Let's see. Okay, it says, "Number one, I've been a member of the community for seven years and owned a home just as long. I have four children through all three schools, elementary, middle, and high school. I volunteered at all schools." And I think it means she's continuing to do that. "Have worked at Fairview with the community, seen the massive growth in the last few years, participated and developed fundraisers for new..." Bowie Playground. "Believe we need greater direction and establishment," I think, or fulfillment, fulfillment for future development and growth for future of town, community, and maintain the small-town feel." Okay, so that is what Julia Hill has put on her application that I've just read. Since she is not here tonight, I wanted everyone to just hear her application. With that, I'm going to start the nominations, and I will make a nomination for Demetrius Ritt. Ms. Jones? Sorry. Yeah.
We just go straight into voting?
Do we get a second, or should we just vote on?
It would need to be seconded.
Okay. I'll make a nomination for Demetrius Ritt.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
We have a first and a second. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Okay. So our first filled seat is Mr. Demetrius Ritt.
Mayor? Sorry.
Yes?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Andrew Mitchell.
We have a first and a second for Mr. Andrew Mitchell. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Nay.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Nay.
Mayor Anderson.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Rod Dawson.
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Nay.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Nay.
Mr. Rod Dawson fills our second seat.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Haley Shulist.
I'll second. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
And Ms. Shulist fills our third Planning Commission seat. We appreciate everyone who has put in their application to serve. Congratulations to the ones who will be serving. We have many boards that we could use, you know, people in our community who want to serve. And we also, this board, the seats expire, not our board, but the, I'm talking about the Planning Commission. There's seats that expire. So as these seats expire, please apply again. If you applied this time and were not appointed, please apply again, or apply to one of the other boards, because we just appreciate everyone wanting to serve our community.
Mayor, if I may. Tonight, next item on the agenda you have is for Board of Zoning Appeals. There are four open seats for that, and there are only three applications. And so, please encourage anyone that just applied for the Planning Commission and was not appointed to stay around. And if you're interested in the Board of Zoning Appeals, you may get up and speak for that as well.
Okay. So if anyone who was not appointed at this time to the Planning Commission would like to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have three, and then we have, we have three that have applied, but we have one additional seat that we need to fill.
I have a question. Did someone drop off of the...
The applications that we received, Mr. Batson submitted an application to reapply. His term does not expire at this time. He is, he will continue to serve. He is the only person out of the five members of the BOZA that will continue to serve. The other four seats will be appointed tonight.
Mayor? Did anybody want to volunteer to help us with the BOZA?
Well, we're, should we, I guess, we're going to that item next. Yeah. So, Mr. Carter, how would that be appropriate? Would, if someone who didn't get nominated to the Planning Commission, can they ask to be appointed to that fourth open seat to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
They can. And they haven't filled out an application for it, but they filled out an application for another, so you have their information. I think it would be appropriate. I think you just probably lost most of the Planning Commission.
Well, Mr. Mitchell, are you interested in the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I think it'd be appropriate if he, if he is, yeah.
Okay. And so, do we need to just...
I don't know if there's anyone else left.
I was looking around. I don't, I don't see anyone else that asked to be on the Planning Commission.
I need to be enlightened in just a minute, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Are we appointing four or three?
Uh, well...
Since Mr. Batson's standing on.
Okay. So we're appointing four, but we only have three applications.
Okay. But Mr. Batson won't be considered. He's, he's still on the Board of Zoning Appeals, correct?
Correct. Mr. Batson's term does not expire.
So we're still appointing four?
Yes, sir.
All right. Want to make sure.
The four members that term, their term expired. Commissioner Hall, you have been removed from the Board of Zoning Appeals as a sitting Commissioner. The Board of Zoning Appeals hears appeals from this board, so we cannot have a sitting Commissioner on the BOZA. Ms. Bush's term has expired. Mr. Dewire's term has expired. And Mr. Tortorelli's term has expired.
Can we just go ahead and nominate?
But the appeals are from the Planning Commission, not from the BOC. I think it'd be appropriate for a BOC member, well, I don't know how, you can read our, I may be thinking of Spring Hill, so you may need to look at the, can't have it, okay. Scratch that. I'm mixing my cities up.
Okay. So...
Sorry, Mr. Hall.
Can you, can you just announce the three, and then Mr. Mitchell, and then, I guess, we can, since we have, Mr. Mitchell's wanting to serve, and we have three others, we can vote on those three. Is, is there anyone here that put in an application for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Mr. Dewire.
Mr. Dewire. If the board would like, we, Mr. Mitchell, you've already spoken, so we know, unless you'd like to add something. Mr. Dewire, would you like to speak in front of the board?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Compared to some of these other fellows here, I'm not going to give you a big, long, fancy speech, but compared to some of these fellows here, education-wise, I'm Governor Sackhammer. But there's, I've got common sense. I've been on the board, the BOZA board, for two terms, and would be honored to serve again in that capacity to the citizens, because I myself have a lot of irons in the fire. But I'm always here for a BOZA meeting. I haven't missed one the past two terms I've served. I'm fair with voting. I listen to the citizens. Majority rules with me. It's all what citizens are warning, because I'm working for them, not myself. That doesn't concern me, my own needs. And that's about all I got to say. Y'all got any questions?
Mr. Dewire, I've known you a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know how much you love Fairview, so we are honored to have you on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, would you like to say something again? Or, I mean, you're welcome to.
I haven't heard my coffee request heard yet. I'm just kidding. No, that was it.
So is it appropriate for us to name the four and vote?
Yeah, you could, you could do it two ways. You could make, you can nominate the slate of four for the four positions. They all have the same beginning and ending date, and so it really doesn't matter what order they're in. Or you could do them one at a time.
I think all four would be appropriate.
So is the motion to appoint Mike Anderson, Greg Dewire, Julia Hill, and Mr.?
Mitchell.
Andrew Mitchell.
Andrew Mitchell, yes.
To the four positions. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Item 11B passes 5-0 for the four who we just nominated and appointed. Item 11C, Resolution 33-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of two citizens and one Commissioner to the Parks and Landscape Board. I would like to make a nomination that Mr. Hall remain on the Parks and Landscape Board as the Commissioner appointment. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall. Vice Mayor McDonald.
Okay. Mr. Hall is appointed as the Commissioner to the Parks and Landscape Board. Are the two citizens who are... Okay. So we have five with two. So we'll do the exact same thing. We'll have the five come up in order, and then just give us a little information about yourself, your name and address, and we will not make nominations and vote. So the first is Karen Bowle.
Hi. I thank you for the opportunity. I applied for this position. My name is Karen Bowle. I live at 7401 Galahad Court. I don't have any experience, just a desire to make our parks great. I live at Bowie as much as I can since my most recent retirement. I was in 40 years of ophthalmology, running a practice and being a certified ophthalmic technician for 40 years. And that included traveling across the country, training surgeons in the OR to do lasers for cataract surgery. So I have a lot of interest in parks and keeping them as green as we can and keeping the green space, being this city's growing. I've only been here 10 years, and I've seen a massive amount of growth, some pluses and some not-so-good things. So my passion is just to keep the parks going, keep them beautiful, utilize them as much as we can, and leave a legacy for generations to come, for children. I know our grandchildren come and visit from the Cincinnati area, and we are at Bowie every time they're here, every single day. So I don't have any bragging points, nor do I have a speech to give. I didn't know I was going to, and this is not my forte. But I do have passion. I'm honest. I have energy. I have a volunteer spirit. I'm doing Meals on Wheels, and I'm trying to find new things to give back to the community. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Blake Gillespie. I live at 7173 Triple Crown Lane. I was born and raised in Franklin, but I've lived in Fairview since 2017. I have three, three kids that all go to school here in Fairview. I have a bachelor's degree in Parks and Recreation Administration. I say certified arborist. I'm a licensed commercial herbicide applicator in the state of Tennessee. I serve as the vice president, current vice president for Tennessee Vegetation Management Association, the right-of-way manager for Dixon Electric System in Dixon, Tennessee. My kids frequent the parks here in Fairview. We frequent the parks in Dixon a lot. I see their facilities and their parks in Dixon, and I don't see why we can't have some of the things that they have. I know we're a much smaller town than Dixon, but they, their parks and landscaping, all the things that they do is run really well. I think I could have a little input on that. But just, I have the three kids, and we all frequent the parks here in Fairview, and I feel like they give me input on what they like, and I think I could break that back to the board.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mark Albreton.
Hi. Good evening. It's been a long night. Talking to you. The application makes it very clear that, statement on the application is community involvement, and whatever else you would like to share with the board. So, community involvement usually comes into effect when people think of Little League Baseball, and fundraisers, and so forth like that. My community involvement has been professional, actually. I've had two basic careers in community involvement. First, I owned a business in Dixon for 14 years. It was named Dixon Gymnastics. And we had, at our peak, we had 325 students, and it was very community-oriented. You know, we were in and out of the schools. We were in and out of, the library lady here, she would have loved us. We would have taken our kids into the library, and they would have put on shows for others that would come in. We were involved in the parades, Old Timers' Day, anything we could do, and then fundraisers for the competitive team and so forth like that. And that was really where my first level of community involvement came in. Secondly, my second career was in alcohol and drug treatment. I'm an alcohol and drug counselor. Y'all probably know Mira Lake, right up here in Burns. Used to be New Life Lodge. Some people go back that long. And I worked there for 15 years, and as a counselor for the teenagers that were there. And through that, I had a lot of community involvement, but it was all pretty specific to alcohol and drug treatment. It was drug court, law enforcement, unfortunately, law enforcement quite often when I was dealing with teenagers. And it was the Dixon County Drug Coalition, halfway house franchise, if you want to use that word, all the different halfway houses in the Dixon area, and so forth like that. A lot of involvement with functions and so forth like that. Currently, I am in my, I guess it's a third career. It's kind of part B of part two, anyway, where I'm working in management with alcohol and drug. I work with, for a company by the name of Acadia Behavioral Health, and we own a whole bunch of alcohol and drug treatment centers and psych hospitals around the country. And I have responsibility for the compliance and risk and quality of 10 of the facilities and kind of oversee them. But through that, I'm involved with committees at all the different facilities, board management, leading boards, governing body, and just chairing meetings and so forth like that. So some involvement with that. So what does that all have to do with parks and landscape? Well, it's community involvement, which is what the application talked about. And that's where it really comes through. The Bowie, Bowie Park, I'm a member of the Friends of Bowie. I forgot to put that on my application for some reason, but I did want to make sure and mention that. I have, you know, a lot of experience over at Bowie. I've been here in, since 2018, and have been in and out of the park more times than I can count. I don't do it as much now, because my knees don't work like they did five years ago when I would hike a lot. But I have a strong desire to be a part of the community. I work from home, and with my current job, what I do is I work from home. One of the things that creates is a sense of isolation. I don't know if any of y'all have experience from working from home, but it kind of grows on you like that. This year, I decided I'm going to do something different. I'm going to get more community involved here in Fairview. I came here in January to your Commissioners' meeting, and I've been coming back since. I came here in January to your commissioners meeting, and I've been coming back since. Who does that, just for fun? I don't know, but I do. And I, I've been coming just to, just to get involved. And was inspired by everything that I'm seeing, saying, I want to do more. I have a life, my dad's a, my dad was a deceased now, a Baptist preacher. And he always said, whatever you do, just try to make a difference. And that kind of took with me, and really, that's what I want to do. I just want to make a difference, and being on this board would give me an opportunity to make a difference here in Fairview. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Mrs. or Ms. Kristen Courtney.
As of six weeks ago, it is Mrs., so you had it right. My name is Kristen Courtney. I wasn't prepared to speak today, so in public speaking is not my forte. So I will stick to what I had on my application. I reside at seven three zero four Henderson Drive. I hold a bachelor's degree in interior design and have five years of experience as an interior designer in the home building industry here in Williamson County. In these roles, I adhere to Architectural Review Committee and Design Review Committee guidelines, ensuring compliance with community standards. Additionally, I design community aesthetics, contributing to a cohesive and visually appealing environment. And I believe that community service is very important, and this really stuck out to me when I saw the application become available.
Thank you. Ms. Colleen Van Fossen?
Hello, my name is Colleen Van Fossen, and I live at seventy-eight oh one Pine Crest Court in Fairview, Tennessee. I moved to Fairview on Labor Day weekend nineteen ninety-five. And I've lived here all that time, and I see so many changes. I remember when we had the food lion, I remember when the Mexican respite was Danvers, and so on and so forth. But I, I'm, I think I'm leaning towards becoming a conservationist. Tennessee, the state of Tennessee loses hundreds of acres of farmland every day to development. And I was thinking about that on my way to work today. I thought, what if, what if fifty years from now, America couldn't feed itself because we took all of our farmland and turned it into strip miles and Chick-fil-A's? You know, so that's the big vision somehow. But I want to see us value our green space. I want to see us value the trees and the vegetation. I want to see us value that and not look at it as an obstacle that needs to be removed so that something could be built on top of it. The tree cutting that occurred on Dice Lampley and Northwest Highway, I just grieved every time I'd drive down that road because where there used to be a lovely row of trees, now there are just six-foot-high trunks sticking out of the earth. And I just think that we could do a, a, a better job on valuing what we have. You know, they're not making any more land, and land is valuable in Williamson County, and everybody's scrapping over it. In every meadow and every farmland that's available, I'm sure there are folks knocking at their door. Farmers are getting older and older as a demographic, and, you know, when the children don't want to farm and the grandchildren don't want to farm, what are you going to do with that property? Well, you're going to sell it. So anyway, that's what I see on the Parks and Landscape Board. So more about me and why I, more about me, period. I've had several different careers. I've worked in higher education. I was a recruiter for a liberal arts college and lived in McKenzie, Tennessee. Then I became a recruiter for Nashville State Community College and moved to Nashville. From that, I went into an HR position, and I was in that for a little while as a recruiter there, recruiting for executive positions. Now I work in healthcare. I am a credentialing specialist for a healthcare company that owns hospitals. And what I do is I, my company builds a hospital. I get that hospital enrolled in Medicare and Medicaid. So I'm enrolling hospitals in Medicare and Medicaid. When I worked for HCA at Centennial Hospital, I enrolled doctors or I, I credentialed doctors to work at the facility. So I have a very long history of being extremely detail-oriented. I'm a, I, I'm a little OCD in that I like, I'm, I'm very curious and I want to fill in every blank, and I'm going to dig in after all those details. And, you know, and I want to serve the community and be involved in a way that I find meaningful and that I hope would be of some usefulness to the, to the community. So I applied for this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe Ms. Julia Hill is still. Okay. All right, so.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Blake Gillespie.
Second. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mr. Gillespie, you will be one of our positions on the Parks and Landscape Board. I'll make a nomination for Ms. Kristen Courtney. Second. Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Kristen Courtney, you are our second appointment to the Parks and Landscape Board. Like I said with the others, we have, you know, bore, several boards in our community, different positions, and as people, you know, come up for reappointment, I would like for anyone who didn't make one of the boards to come back because we appreciate your willingness to serve our community. Thank you. Item D, Resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City of Fairview to participate in the Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. Fire Chief, Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is a grant from our insurance company, Public Enemy Partners, that we participate in almost every year. It's a, one of those grants, it's a one-for-one. Every dollar we spend, up to two thousand dollars, they will match. So we are in the bracket that we get two thousand dollars, so we, we in two thousand, we get four thousand dollars worth of safety gear. And all we really have to do is apply for it. But I needed a resolution from the board to participate.
Motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eleven D passes five zero. Item eleven E, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the twenty twenty-four additions of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, and International Energy Conservation Code, with local amendments and providing for related matters. Mr. Greer.
Currently, we operate under the twenty eighteen International Code Council codes. Williamson County, back in twenty twenty-three, updated their code books to the twenty-one codes. The fire department reached out and they are looking to go to the twenty-four code, and so I implored my staff to dig into the twenty-four code and see if it had better things to offer. There are a few different items that I felt would be beneficial for the community to have within it. The International Energy Code is the primary point of the amendments. The state of Tennessee had some laws that went into place around the Energy Code. The amendments that are located within this ordinance keep us compliant with state law in regard to the Energy Conservation Code.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Greer, is there any awareness being built around those that this may impact, that we are making this change?
From what my staff has found, there are not many significant changes that will greatly alter building practices in Fairview. One of the greatest changes that exists is due to the presence of storms within our area. They have updated the wind resistance of buildings to sustain a hundred and thirty mile an hour winds versus what it was previously. That's kind of the only thing that changes a little bit of cost-wise, a few more structural tie-downs within buildings. But out of everything that they have changed substantially, the code has stayed relatively the same. The Energy Conservation Code has progressed much along the lines of, of the national movement of green building and sustainability. The state of Tennessee chose to not follow along those lines and to abide by the twenty eighteen International Energy Conservation Code with the two thousand nine charts and some of the information that's in the two thousand nine Energy Code. So the amendment that's in this allows us to, for commercial, we can apply the twenty-four code. For residential, we have to follow the eighteen code with the oh-nine charts. Which, it's a lot of words, but it's what we're currently doing today for that Energy Code. The state of Tennessee doesn't allow us to impose a lot of those items, which those are the cost-carrying items that would significantly drive up construction cost.
I think I would just ask that any application that this may have an impact on, just have like a banner or something that just notifies individuals that we have changed.
Most of our applications that come in, this is probably due to poor communication on the city's side, but most of our plant sets come in with designed to the twenty twenty-four codes, and then we have to have them corrected to be twenty eighteen codes, which if you're compliant to twenty-four, you're more than compliant to eighteen. That's one thing about government, there's never less regulations. So every year you improve, there's always a, they never remove anything from the code. So, most of them are currently complying with this in other municipalities and localities around. This is just an opportunity for us to, to be in compliance as well. It also gives us the benefit of a department. The International Code Council no longer issues and certifies people under the twenty eighteen code. They only do it within seven years of the most current code. The twenty-four code is what came out. So they have testing available for the twenty-one code and the twenty-four code. And so for me to have any new staff or current staff get any additional certifications to our current code at the eighteen, they cannot take any tests for that because they're not available.
Just like, I'm all for it. I just wanted to just make sure that we don't get people yelling or like, you didn't tell me, you know, just awareness on it.
This does have a second reading, by the way. It's a ordinance change to the municipal code, so this is our first reading. We will make sure we get our public information out there. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eleven E passes five zero. Item eleven F, Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, an ordinance regarding, sorry, regulating open burning within the municipal limits of Fairview, Tennessee. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is codes night, lots of things going to be on it. Uh, this is just to clean up our, our burn ordinance. We revised it, I think in two thousand twenty and tightened it up a little bit. Talking with the fire marshal and some discussions with Ethan, we've decided to tighten those burn, uh, ordinance those up even more. It's basically on commercial burning and land clearing. The land clearing would affect residences. Most of this only affects commercial properties that people are developing. So we've, the burn process is still pretty much the same. They have to come to the fire department, they apply for the burn permit. We go out and check their site with some new stipulations. Open burning, any fire outdoors in which the materials are burned in an open flame without chimney or stack, that's what the open burning is. We are going to require an air, what they call an air curtain for any commercial burning for developments that are less than twenty acres. So you could still open burn if you had twenty acres that you were clearing if we deemed it safe, and we changed the setbacks. It has to be five hundred feet from any structure, five hundred feet from any property line. So you couldn't have a tiny strip that went twenty acres back and burning right beside your neighbors. Uh, we feel like this will cut down on some of the nuisance of the burning, the air curtain. It's basically a container, like a storage-type container, one of the big ones, and the tops cut out of it. They put all the material in there, it's got a fan, burns it really hot, gives it a lot of air, and it burns clean. So, and it also burns faster. They're not going to be burning for weeks and weeks. They'll, we required it for Walmart, we've required it for a couple of other locations. But this is just in an effort to, to cut down on some of the, the nuisance of burning. But it's pretty straightforward.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, so I would like an air curtain required for all open burning on any type of development, period. I've visited Aiden Woods when all that burning was going on, and I walked the neighborhood with neighbors and the ash was falling on me. I don't, you know, we had, there's a property across the street that was clear-cut by an individual who owns the property, but he wanted to burn. The piles of trees were as tall as this building and, or inside this building and asked for burn permits many times from many different individuals in the fire department, and thank you for turning him down. But I just, I just think that it should cut, it should be an air curtain, period.
Yeah, he, he wouldn't have been able to burn under this ordinance either.
I know, because it's less than twenty acres, but I'm just saying, the one over there was fifty acres. But I'm just saying, the one over there was 50 acres. And the problems it caused for month after month after month for that, that, the neighbors in that area, I don't ever want to see that happen again.
Ethan, is it, it's.
Mayor, this ordinance states that open burning categories and conditions, A, clearing land greater than or equal to 20 acres, and air curtain destructor, ACD, must be used and operated per the manufacturer's specifications. So it does require.
Require, yes.
An air curtain to be used.
Okay, I thought you had said under 20 acres, because that's what I wrote down.
I think I misspoken, I was, I guess I was trying to say anything over 20 acre, like a 20 acre track.
Okay, I'm.
And it allows them not to set back.
Did I misunderstand because I wrote it down?
Yeah, under 20 acres cannot burn.
Cannot burn. They must chip or haul off their, their trees.
Okay, I, I wrote it down.
I may have, I may have misspoken.
It's okay, I just want to make sure that we're clear because I just, this is, this is a real hot button for me because I watched them clear cut 50 acres. And the trees were, there, there was burning going on that nobody was monitoring. It was overnight smoldering. There were fires that erupted by themselves in the mulch. I mean, this is such a dangerous situation. And the ash and everything that just went, it was a mile from that development.
Yeah, we, we answered a lot of those calls and unfortunately.
I know you did, and.
Unfortunately, a lot of people, we have an ordinance saying you must obtain a burn permit and they still do not obtain a burn permit. And sometimes they burn without a permit. And our, our penalty for that is set by the state and it's $50, so.
Did we assess them $50 a day?
No, we, we went and put it out.
And that's not fair to our fire department and our community who pays their tax dollars pay. I mean, for a developer to do something like that and then our tax dollars have to go and, and pay for them not doing the right thing.
And again, I apologize, it's anything, if you are clearing over 20 acres, you cannot, am I saying that right again, Ethan, or am I saying it wrong again? Anything over 20 acres, you have to use an air curtain. There is no option to.
Okay, so what are we saying that's happening now less?
There's some setbacks on other that would hinder burning on personal property that would be a resident that we don't charge burn permits for. That's a 500 foot setback, is that correct, Ethan, that's what we talked about?
Correct.
So if you owned 10 acres as a resident and you wanted to clear the back five acres, you would not be able to burn, even with a burn permit, we would not allow it because the setbacks would basically create, you would have to have a four acre wide track to even burn on to, for the setbacks, for the minimum setbacks. It's $500, it's 500 feet from a property line, 500 feet from a structure. I think that, is that what you and Sean discussed, is that correct?
That's correct. 500 feet from a occupied structure, 500 feet from a public roadway and 500 feet from any property boundary.
Basically is gonna shut down open burning other than campfires, fire pits, things like that in the city because you would, you would need a very large parcel to be able to do that, even as a resident.
Okay, let me, let me make sure I'm clear. Over 20 acres, it's a air curtain.
Yes, ma'am.
And less than 20 acres, you can't do it at all.
You can only have a campfire that's three feet by three feet.
Well, I didn't mean roasting weenies. I meant like, you know, so we can have a fire pit, we can do a little, do a bonfire and roast some hot dogs or whatever, but.
Can't burn leaves still, it's not allowed. But again, you would have to have a special piece of property to comply within the setbacks to be able to burn. And it is still under our fire marshals or our officer on duties judgment even at that. Like if, if there was this perfect piece of property that had 500 setback, 500 feet setbacks from everywhere, if we got there and it was still not compliant, we would not issue a burn permit.
And just help me, the air curtain, does that burn it to nothing?
It incinerates it to.
Totally.
Just pretty much not.
Totally.
It forces air to it to create, to burn hotter, faster. It doesn't smoke, which is usually the complaint.
And so this is for commercial or commercial and residential?
The burn ordinance basically complies with any burning, whether it's commercial or residential. It's more geared toward commercial burning because that's where we have a lot of the issues when people are clearing land for developments. That's usually where we get the most complaints. We still have people.
So it sounds like to me they, if it's, if it's not allowed under 20, an air curtain over 20, pretty much they have to have an air curtain or they can't burn.
Yes, ma'am.
Cool.
There, there may be a perfect piece of property out there that they could, but it would be very difficult.
Just so you know, in our conversations with contractors over the last couple of weeks, I have expressed to them that this was a drafted piece of legislation coming before you tonight. And I have not received one negative comment. Most contractors do not wish to burn. Most developers do wish to burn. Most contractors think that it is the large cost for them because they have to have someone there 24 hours a day. They have to deal with the smoke and ash and everything else. Most of them would prefer, as a contractor, the person who's actually doing the work, to chip up the material and haul it out.
It, it will be a cost to the developers. Renting that air curtain is an expense, but again, the manpower that needed to, to sit on a fire all day and all night is.
I would say the monitoring versus hauling it off would probably be a wash.
Yep.
Chief, how, well, this, just to clear the air. Is this gonna have any impact on any?
Oh, so you're being the joker now.
It's a hot button issue. I've got more if you want me to keep going.
Funny dad joke.
Is there any impact to just your, your average family looking to have a campfire in the backyard? Yes or no?
It is not.
Okay.
Normally those are three by three fires.
Where, yeah, yeah.
Three by three, by three, by four foot, something like that. We, we don't even issue burn permits for it. We appreciate when people tell us that they're having them. But again, this is to deter people burning in confined spaces.
Quickly, if, if an individual on private property, not a developer, not developing anything, but had some brush that was larger than that, could they get a burn permit through you to get that approved? Or is it, does this kill that?
If they can meet the setback regulations.
Requirements, okay.
500 feet.
Correct.
Thank you.
Pretty good setback.
Good with me.
It, it would have to be a large piece of property.
Sure.
But they could also separate it into small little bonfires and do, do that a bit at a time.
Oh, I thought you were raising your hand.
No, sir, I've got no questions.
Okay, did we?
Oh, yeah.
I guess we vote on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
11F passes 5-0. 11G, ordinance 2025-12, an ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee to require Knox box key access systems for certain occupancy groups to ensure emergency responder access. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, again, this is another code requirement. We have adopted this several years ago through code, through the international fire code. What we're asking with this is to add language that this is retroactive. If you have an older business, we would still like to require you within 180 days of notification. That's basically when Sean comes and does his inspections that you need to put a Knox box on your, on your building. Makes quick access for us. We don't destroy property trying to get if there's a fire alarm at that building and we can't get a key holder or get someone on. And we can't verify there's not a fire in there. We have to break down the door. It's a lot of cost to the owner for possibly a faulty fire alarm. But it allows us to get access to the building quickly. I think Sean does a good job. If it's a strip mall, we have a centralized one and we'll have several keys for that strip mall in one box. So it wouldn't mean every business in that complex would need to, to purchase a box. Usually it's just one and we'll have several keys marked on which unit they open. Currently it is in the code in the 2018. The next document is gonna be for the 2024 fire code. It is in there. We're just asking to put the language in there to make that retroactive, not just for new businesses.
Okay, so my business had, we all three have keys in a Knox box.
That's correct.
Which, that's great, because I don't want you breaking my door down. But I know that the property owner on Cumberland with the bridge, they already have a Knox box for their property because they have several houses on that property. But what about other residences who have electronic gates at their property?
So the one you spoke of on Cumberland, they do have the electronic gate that allows us access. We have talked to that owner and since they have multiple structures on that property, they have been generous enough to give a, give us a kind of layout of the entire property. We know the names of the buildings. So if there's nine buildings on there and they say someone is in trouble in the barn, well, if we drove around there for 10 minutes, there's five barns in there.
Several barns, right.
So they've named them all, we have them in our pre-plan. We can see that some of the gates, the newer gates all have that on there. Some older gates, they can probably be retrofitted because one thing with access, we can't keep codes stored in our computers or anything like that. This is, it allows us to access through a radio or a key. For instance, Marymount has the Knox box key system on their gate. Our key fits in there, we turn it, it opens the gate. And it is only our key that fits in there, the city of Fairview Fire Department. I can go to Franklin, my key does not fit in any of their Knox boxes and their key does not fit in any of our Knox boxes. If someone takes a Knox box key out of its holder on any of our trucks, it logs who that person is. If there is ever a problem, we could go back and audit that, but we've never had a problem.
So you're saying the property on Cumberland, you have a plan of the buildings and you have a special key?
Actually, theirs is a newer system. It's kind of like one out on 96 at Vintage Mill Works and we can open them with our radios.
Okay, so you can access it that way?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the other residences who have gates, how do you access in an emergency situation?
Hopefully someone would let us in. Some of them, some of the newer technology, we can push against the gate and the force of us pushing will open it up. We can't require a resident to put that on there. We can require businesses, but not residents. If any resident has a gate, they would like to see the options for their gate for that system. Our fire marshal, Sean Sullivan, could come out, speak with them, see what works best for them. But it's, it's not giving us a code on a piece of paper or hey, put that in the truck in case you ever have to come here, it just doesn't work that way, so. But most electronic gates have the option to put either the Knox lock on it or the push to enter, I think is what it's called, or click to enter is the new system with our, that work on just our P25 radios.
Mayor?
Sorry, if you're not done.
I'm not. So just one, give me one more second. So is it proper procedure if the person doesn't have a way to access their gate, for them to give the dispatcher the gate code? Because it's typed on the, the little pad or whatever that EMS carries, that the, give them the code so they can open the gate?
Our MDTs, they could, they could give that to the dispatcher. That does, that could be put in through the MDT from the dispatch. If anyone is familiar with those MDTs, as maybe Dawson, those things roll really quick as information's coming in because every time someone puts in something at 911, it rolls the screen up. So if you happen to miss that and no one told you that it's in the MDT, it could be missed.
So if they get to the gate and they don't see a way to open it, would they scroll through and find that gate code?
Normally what, and this would just be me, when I was on the truck, my first instinct would be to get on the radio to ECOM and say, hey, we need a gate code for this. Because again, scrolling through script, and like I said, it's, it's usually long. It's not short. Like they're, they're recording everything everybody's saying, so it just keeps coming up. If someone gets on scene, that comes up. If they give a scene size up, that comes up and it just keeps rolling your information that you're needing to see further and further down. So it's not even on the screen anymore, you've got to go to the next screen. So best practice would be if they could put a Knox box on it, they have them for the home residential style gates also that aren't just the commercial ones.
So if EMS or fire gets to a place and that situation happens, then do they recommend that they put a, some type of something on their gate to help in a different situation that might happen?
Probably. And, and again, if the resident needs to know more about it, they can contact the fire marshal. He can give them all the options. Like I said, right now there's two that we would use and it's the, the click to enter or the Knox box. I don't know which one's less expensive, probably the newer gate systems. Click to enter is probably a good choice, but older ones, the Knox box key is very reliable.
So typically in a medical emergency, if they get to the gate and the gate's closed, they just sit there and wait for somebody to get to the gate to open it for them?
I don't know. They, they could, they could call on the radio, they could get out and try to open the gate, see if there's a place to open it. Not sure, there's a lot of different options that we could, we could disable the gate with our tools also. But again, that's expensive for someone.
Mayor? Move to question.
We haven't even got to motion, brother.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion to approve?
Second. Mayor?
Yes?
Move to question.
Two thirds to move the motion. Unless everyone agrees you want to vote.
So I assume I'm not able to finish my conversation here that's very pertinent. So if you'd like for us to go ahead and vote, let's vote. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11G passes 5-0. Item 11H, ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance of the city, city of Fairview, Tennessee to amend ordinance 2019-21 and section 7-201, 7-202 and 7-203 of the Fairview Municipal Code to adopt the 2024 addition of the International Fire Code, including all appendices and to establish additional fire protection requirements for certain occupancies. Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, since. Mayor, commissioners, since we had this discussion with, with planning to move to the twenty twenty-four international fire code, we are currently on the twenty eighteen. In our discussions, we thought it would be wise for our codes department and the fire department to be working out of the same year code book since they are cross-referenced in certain areas. We didn't wanna adopt a code, the fire code that referenced twenty twenty-four references in the building code and them having only been on the two thousand eighteen code. This is the, basically the same code or the, the same language we used to adopt the twenty eighteen code back in twenty nineteen. Kind of the, the bullet points is we adopted everything in full minus the resident, single family residential sprinkler code. Multi-family buildings, that's three or more units have to be sprinkled with a thirteen, NFPA thirteen system. And the only other thing that we amended in that is the sprinkler ordinance for commercial structures. I think in the code, it, it lists several that are from ten to twelve thousand, depending on occupancy. We have stuck with our five thousand square feet. Anything that's five thousand square feet or larger has to be sprinkled in a commercial building.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions from the board?
I just have a, a quick question that's not specific to this, but because these are all ordinances, am I correct? E, F, G, and H will go to a second reading and there'll be an opportunity for public review.
They don't have to have a public hearing, but they will have a second reading.
Right, okay. Great, thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eleven H passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve?
Mayor, if I may, I wanna clarify of the vote on ordinance, I think, believe it was two oh two five one three. We had a first and a second. The mayor was asking some questions, then Mr. Buffalini moved to call the question. Before we voted on that, mayor, you said, are we gonna vote on it? We went to the main item and voted on it. We never did vote on the call to the question. It wasn't necessary because we went to the main item. Mr. Greer thought there might be some confusion with the minutes and I wanted to clarify what, what happened, so there was no confusion in the minutes.
I was asked to stop talking so we could vote. That's what happened?
We never got to the, we, we voted on the main item. We never voted on Mr. Buffalini's motion.
Okay, we should vote on Mr. Buffalini's motion.
It's not necessary now because we, we, we voted on the main item.
That was a question.
Yeah. I think we were fine. We just, we voted on the main item and we approved it, so.
Item number twelve, roundtable, mayors and commissioners, not mayors, but mayor and commissioners. Maybe we have more mayors. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, mayor. First off, I wanna thank all the city employees, all, all the divisions that we have that takes care of our city, including the legal department that I very seldom ever mention, but I won't mention that tonight. The next thing, I wanna thank four citizens that helped me in a personal tragedy last Tuesday morning. Sharon and Dale Burridge, Caitlin Jensen, Cody Jensen. You people will always be dear to my heart. I wanna thank y'all for your, your help with me last Tuesday morning. I will never forget y'all. Thank you.
Mr. Buffalini?
Thank you, mayor, board. I wanted to perhaps have something to, being reviews, reviewed on current serving members on the planning commission. As a city commissioner, it's both our duty and commitment to ensure that all appointed boards and commissioners operate with integrity, accountability, and high standards of preparedness. Planning commission handles complex issues that shape our future of our city. Its members are expected to carefully review case materials, understand applicable policies, and engage with the public for, for input. Each appointee plays a critical role in making an informed decision and with that responsibility comes an expectation of full readiness and also to be active participation. At this time, I would like to ask to entertain just looking at the current appointed positions on the planning commission based on ongoing concerns regarding consistent lack of engagement, case materials, including vital documents and relative data. Despite the importance of this compensation position, there has been a pattern of insufficient preparedness, preparedness that has affected the commission's ability to function at its best. In order to uphold the effectiveness and integrity of the planning commission, it's also necessary to ensure all members are meeting the standards that is required of the role. I believe a change in appointment may now be warranted, but that's something that we can all discuss. Additionally, we have a number of qualified applicants who are ready and willing to serve at this present opportunity and strengthen the commission. We've heard from a lot of individuals tonight that made some great points. So I respectfully request that at the next meeting, we discuss looking at the status of current board members on the planning commission. And I just wanted to see what, what everyone thought about that situ, situation. I also wanna say that our July third event was absolutely amazing as usual and, gosh, there must have been more people this year than there were last year and for the past three years that I've been part of it, so four years now. So thank you to our city staff. I'm not gonna keep everyone here longer. I did have a couple of the questions, but I'm just gonna save that for our, our next meeting. That's all I have right now, mayor. So once again, thank you for everybody who applied for all these positions this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, mayor and board. Thank you so much to everybody who applied for one of these board positions. It's really great to see such a high turnout and these were not easy decisions. So really grateful for everyone who is serving and everyone who's willing to serve and really looking forward to the upcoming terms. I wanted to just say wow at the July third celebration, the way that we supported the shop with a cop program by selling out the police department's stand and special thanks out to, again, Richard Ross and Rachel and Marissa passing out those T-shirts, "The sun was right in your faces" the whole time and you, y'all were really amazing just getting all that done. So it just, it really was great and I'm so looking forward to next year, which is a very big celebration for our country. It's the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of our great nation, so I'm, I think it's gonna be great and really looking forward to that. Congratulations to our two new officers and our new fire recruit and EMTs. I also wanna give a huge shout out to our softball and baseball teams. Our rec teams are still going on in the World Series as of now. I'm so proud of these kids and so proud of the community who came out and supported them to make sure that the cost could be covered and just, it's just amazing to see everybody throw their support behind our kids. We are such a community and, and every time, everyone shows up for them. And one last thing, I've been asked by the Fairview Friends of the Library to mention to everyone, they are collecting books, puzzles, and games through August first for the August Books Sale. As a former law librarian, this is near, near and dear to my heart, the book sale, and I was so excited to see our new director, our new branch manager, Ms. Beth Heinman. And thank you, Ms. Jones, for introducing her to us tonight. But again, the book sale is going to happen for members only on August twentieth, so they get a little preview night, and then the book sale itself is August twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third. The funds raised are used for books, equipment, and programs for the Fairview Library and as you heard, they do wonderful programming and provide excellent resources to our community. So again, they're accepting donations of books, puzzles, and games through next Fri, a week, a week from Friday, August first, two weeks from Friday. Ms. Mary, August first, it's a Friday and it's, it's, it's coming up in two weeks. So anyway, thank y'all so much for, for everything, board. I know it was a long night, but I think we accomplished a lot this evening.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, mayor. Congrats to all the new board members. Congratulations. Look forward to serving with those that made it onto the planning commission and look forward to seeing what the others do on the boards that they were assigned, assigned to. But I do appreciate all those that applied. I know some of them might be a little upset that they didn't get what they wanted to, but please don't be discouraged as someone who has tried multiple times to get certain seats in this city. Sometimes perseverance is what it takes and I would encourage you to continue to apply. Congratulations, or welcome to the new librarian. I hope Fairview treats you well and I'm sure we will. Congratulations to the new officers as well. Big shout out to Richard Ross. I know it's becoming a echo in here, but I really wish that more people in this community could understand the amount of work that that guy puts into that July third event. And that's it. That's all for me.
I, I really appreciate everyone who came out. A lot of times we have to kinda beg people to fill seats on the different boards and we had such a great group of people and so many people wanting to serve. I'm, I'm excited. We've got so many different important decisions to make on developments that, we, we've got a lot. We've got a lot on the books right now and a lot of great decisions and big decisions to make. So with Haley Shulist having experience on the planning commission, you know, it, the decisions I made were based and, and the people who were chosen, I feel like were based on people who can hit the ground running. So I listened to that. Haley Shulist, she's been on the planning commission for six years. She knows the projects that are going on. She's done a great job and it's just exciting to have her back. Demetrius Ritt, wow, what a resume. I mean, I feel like you're gonna hit the ground running. You'll have to learn the projects, but I know with your background, you will, you'll, you'll get in there and, and be able to just start helping us right away with all your experience and everything. I'm, I'm so excited that you're on here. Rod Dawson, you have served and with your committees that you chaired, with your experience with the projects, working on the twenty forty plan. I mean, you are absolutely gonna come up here, be able to start serving immediately and just with your knowledge of the projects that are going on and past projects in the twenty forty plan, it's, it's a great benefit to our, to me and our board to have you as a part of it. So I feel like the three decisions, in my opinion, were based on, you know, just people with the knowledge who can hit the ground running because we've got so much work ahead of us, okay? And, and there were so many great applicants, but that, I feel like the ones we chose, they just have that, you know, experience and knowledge to be able to, you know, run fast right now and that's what we need. So anybody else who, I was excited that Andrew Mitchell, because he's so sharp, could serve on the zoning appeals board. We needed that extra person. He's gonna be awesome. And then when a planning commission seat comes available, I, I just, he's so sharp, I just feel like he's gonna be, you know, one that can, you know, serve as well as the other ones who came up and, and were willing. So just keep watch and when there's a seat open, please come and apply again. You know, Richard Ross, I don't, I don't really know. I talk to him several times a week and he loves this community so much and puts so much time and effort. You know, Rachel and Marissa, they support him in this third of July, but he is already starting now, just a few days after we had the event, getting our sponsors for next year. He always wants to make, he's always a step ahead wanting to make sure that this community has this event with no tax dollars spent. And it just goes to show each year that he has worked on this third of July event, we have gotten more and more people, sponsors from even outside of our community in Nashville. They see how big this event is and they want to be a sponsor and they're calling him, telling him, I wanna sponsor this event. And it's because our community is so welcoming to them. Richard does such a good job at working with these sponsors, working with the vendors and just his organization. We've got in September, our Nature Fest, it's another huge event. He does a great job with that as well. So I just, I really wanna say thank you to him because I, I mean, he, he's just a go-getter. Congratulations to our two new officers for, you know, Jenna and Tyler for graduating the academy. Wouldn't wanna go through that myself, so I just appreciate what you go through to become a police officer. Our new librarian, excited that you're here. I would like for everyone to go out and just check out the library. It's a good resource. Thank you to Ethan, Tom, Patrick, Rachel, Bree. Thank you for all you do. You know, I appreciate all of you and I know it's late. Let's, and Ben, you're here still. Thank you, guys. What? Okay, like I always say, let's please keep Fairview beautiful and pick up trash and not throw out. Entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion.